You are watching Access LaPorte County, Channel 97. Coming up next is the July 14th meeting for the LaPorte County Budget Hearings. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot access laporte county dot org.
The council workshop for budget hearings, starting with voter registration.
Hello.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So what patient number are we on?
I'm 32.
Thank you.
I know you're here. I know, but you have really five pages. Except for the bump here. That was requested. So we approved. So.
Never mind.
So last year you came to us about it, a bump to part-time extra help, right?
Correct.
And it looks like you got, this is coming with the same request. Can walk through the necessity there?
Right, yes. So that just covers the 20 hours per person, per week at their current rate. And also, we subtracted all the holidays, as was requested of us last year. And as you guys are aware, in December last year, we still had to come to you to have money from our office supplies moved to the part-time salary. So we are just trying to avoid having to do that again.
Okay.
And then, we did send a request for travel. Did you receive that within this budget?
It's not in the budget.
Okay.
We don't have it on the budget board.
Okay. So we had, we were wondering if we could add $750 for travel for our training. Every year we go to our IVRA training. This year especially, it's very important. And from what we're understanding, the commissioners are having to tighten their belt like everyone else. But we just want to make sure it's in our budget so that we're able to go each year.
So is this a continuing, is this continuing head or requirement that's needed every year or state called meeting?
It's not a state-called or required meeting. But, I mean, and we don't get credits for it. But for instance, this year when we go down, we will be getting training from the Indiana Election Division on the new legislative changes. And all of the different technical things that are changing, the security issues, all of that comes up in these conferences. So it's not, not a side conference, if you will. It's our training for voter registration.
Okay. Now, is this separate from the training that is, from talking with the clerk, it sounds like that there is a training that's included with a number of her staff as well as voter registration. This is separate from that?
Correct. This is specific to voter registration issues. The one in December is election administrators. So it's the whole thing. But this will be specific to what our office deals with.
Okay. And the reason we would, so currently, I don't even know what action the Board of Commissioners took where they put a travel restriction down to state-called and continuing ed only. Was that for funding? Does anybody recall what exactly their action was?
No, I don't, sir. I don't go to their meetings.
They passed, made a motion.
So Board of Commissioners, they'll say introduce some sort of action where reduced travel to state-called or, basically limited travel for continuing ed and state-called only. What, how did they pass that? Was it a resolution? Was it a, wasn't an ordinance?
To my knowledge, it will eventually be a full ordinance, but they have only put it out verbally, to my knowledge, right now.
Okay.
And it is, it is because of funding and early on, people were just jumping on, going to, trying to get onto any conference. And they felt that some of it was excessive, so they wanted to make it to help us also with budgeting, to help you, not us, sorry, I'm not one of them there, with budgeting purposes. So that's what it was.
Right. I thought you were finished, I'm sorry. Finished? Okay. It was also because we changed it per diem, they were not happy about.
Yeah.
That's really the crux of the whole thing.
And the per diem has to be done, but there's some other suggestions that I have for you before we do a new ordinance on that.
I understand it, but so, this is, this is something that works and I, only because we have a little, we're fighting between each other, that's not working right now. So I think we should keep with the commissioners, and if there's an individual situation that somebody comes up with, this is a 600-hour, 700-hour thing, they need to come to us and request it at the meeting if they're not going to be denied by the commissioners. But I don't think we need to change the program here.
Well, I don't think we want to add travel to every budget.
That's what I'm saying. We got rid of, we got rid of all that, we fixed all those, and now.
We're able to go to the commissioners to get it.
Right, but it's.
But it sounds like the commissioners are playing politics with it to some extent.
They are, they are. And if there's an individual that wants to come to any one of our council meetings, they can always come to our, the request, you do not have to go, you do not have to come to commissioners first, you can go anytime you want in front of the council. If the commissioners are rejecting them, if they want to come there and plead their case, they plead their case. This is, this is not a required thing, so this is, this is a specific thing they want to get trained on, but it's, it's not required by the state, the state doesn't call for it. So I don't think we need to get involved in this, and let's make something work that's workable. Get commissioners coming up next, let's tell them that.
I guess I have an issue with us setting the bar so low, is that if it's not absolutely required by the state, that they shouldn't get training. Is that making better?
I'm agreeing with you, I just said that three times, so have them come to us.
Okay, but we can approve the funding, but then they're not going to be able to go because the commissioners banned the travel. So what good did it do?
Go ahead, go ahead.
He's agreeing. He's saying, he's saying that if somebody had an issue, they wanted to, I guess, appeal it to us.
Yes.
They could, and we would fund it.
There is no require, there is no.
We're putting you in the middle of everything.
There is no requirement for them going in front of the commissioners first.
If I can help, I can help with this a little bit. They approved our travel, they felt like this was a necessary thing, but they said they were having a really hard time with the funding. They couldn't find the money in theirs, and they said, you know, they have a problem with it if it's in our budget.
They have a travel budget.
Was this for last?
For this year. Just recently, we had this conversation, and it was basically, they signed the paper to approve our travel, but they said there wasn't enough money to cover it. So there was, that was the concern we were told, we were suggested by a couple different individuals to come before you and say, is there any way we can put this in our budget, just to make sure it's there?
That's an awful lot of conversation for $700.
Right. It's what Mr. Yagowski is saying, if you guys want to just come to us and say, I mean, it could be that you'd put it in next year a little bit earlier with the commissioners before other people spend it, and they would approve it because they had the money. I don't know where their budget is, assuming everything is legit.
We budgeted $20,000 for their travel expenses and education training.
I have no idea where it is, but, but all you have to do is get on our agenda and say, we need $700 to go travel to commissioners.
So one of the issues we have is, we can't go to the commissioners until we have an agenda for the, the actual agenda for the conference. And this, the IVRA conference didn't get us the agenda till very last minute, so we wouldn't have even been able to get in front of you guys. And that's why, it's like, I know, we were told by a couple different individuals that the commissioners allowed them to go to these conferences because they had it in their budget. They had travel in their budget. So that, we're just bringing that before you, but I completely understand what you're saying.
It's not the case. Look, we're into this little match with the commissioners. They're mad because we raised the per diem, that's, that's where the argument comes, has nothing to do with this conversation. Either, either you want to give it to somebody else, you want, the commissioners are the ones that we appointed to do this. You know, we've had a fight with them with the posters machine, and I can go with all those stuff.
Yeah.
You're right, over $700, I get your point, but they're mad at us.
Yep.
This was payback. I don't mind saying it, so I said it. You know I would.
Yeah, I know you would.
So I, I don't, I do not agree that we changed what we do. They can come to us if they want to, because there is no rule that you've got to go to commissioner first. It's a courtesy the council gave. The courtesy we already gave the council is, the commissioners is, that we appropriated the money and they're supposed to, they're supposed to divvy it out. So, yeah, let's not ruin something that's.
That's worked previously?
For a long time, not just, not just for a short period of time.
Now, just for the record, what you're asking for is, what, $700 or $750 for employee education and training?
Yes.
Is that the line you're looking for? All right. So, any further points on, regarding this portion of it, of the, of the budget?
We did have to add, we have to add the dues, right? Okay. No, I mean, they're, from last year, didn't they increase? They, the IVRA increased some of their things, so that's where the increase came from in the dues as well.
The only thing that I'm seeing here, you have a bump in, you don't have a bump in dues, it's the same as last year.
Okay.
And then you have, employee education is at $100, the only bump was the extra hire part-time.
Right.
Okay.
So, just so you know, the clerk agreed to pay for the voter registration travel.
Okay.
All right. I got guidance from above.
If I look at my watch, I probably have the same thing. All right. So, any other discussion from the dais?
What are we proposing to do about the part-time pay?
So, on that same subject, so last year, evidently you, your 2024 budget was $1,191 in office supplies. And you guys said, what's how much you spent? But you transferred that money to cover the part-time.
Correct.
But you transferred $1,809. But now you're asking for a $2,640 increase.
Because of days, we had, I actually didn't have an employee for about two months, so we had more money in our budget than we did.
Yeah, I can test that.
So you need the $2,640.
Right. What we're asking, based off of just the hours and so that's.
And what are the, what are the hours that you're?
20 hours a week for two part-time workers tops, no more than 20 hours, and they are not working on the holidays, which was what was requested of us last time. It's the same thing we were given last time, it's just that, like she said, we had more money left over because she didn't have a worker for two months out of the year.
I'm just wondering why it wasn't funded at 20 weeks.
Why is there a disagreement about the amount?
About?
Like the, I mean, Mr. Rosenbaum has indicated before that, that he thinks the amount that's currently there, that we approved last year, is the correct amount. The number that you guys are giving is a little bit higher. What, where's the difference between these two?
All I did was the math. I don't know if, is there less, I don't know, I really don't.
They're saying we're requesting more money.
Yeah, they're, yeah, they're saying we're requesting more.
And how much, how much do, do the part-times all get paid the same, both of them get paid the same?
What's the hourly rate?
1650.
1650.
So 1650 at 20 hours a week at 52 weeks, it's 34,320. And they're working.
But they don't, but you have to now subtract out 14 days.
14 days.
Right.
Plus take a look at the calendar if there's anything else like this, you know, so.
Yeah.
It's nowadays.
So when you said that you took.
So we took out the holidays.
14, so that's 28 days off of that.
No 14, okay, never mind. I know.
Right.
But they're only four times 16.
So when you're looking at the numbers, because I don't have what you have in front of you, so we requested.
There's a book.
There's a book right there.
Okay. Because we requested the 35,200, and that got reduced last year, right?
32, they're in order, the numbers are.
132, he said.
The requested amount that we're looking at for part-time is 34,320. That's, that's the number that's before us.
And that's the same number that was requested last year?
Yeah.
Right. So we ended up getting 31,680, right? And we requested this year 32,340, only because we knew.
34,320.
That we have both positions filled now.
Now, they're working eight-hour days, part, with partial days of the week, or only a few days a week?
They work four, they either work four or five hours, and then they either do.
And they work five days a week.
Right. They only do up to 20, which is what we were told.
The 34,320 that is, you're requesting is without the holidays being taken up?
We're requesting 32,340.
So I wonder why our stuff isn't matching then?
You see the, you see in the book, right there in front of you?
Yeah.
That's not what I'm, that lever.
Right. That's not what, we, we are requesting 32,340.
The numbers were.
Sounds fine.
We're not the one who's changing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
32,320.
32,340 is what we put down as requested.
Councilman Mullenhauer pointed out, it's probably just a transposing of the numbers.
Right.
The.
Yes.
Yeah, that's it.
Something.
Yeah, so that's what, we're not asking for 34.
Motion to approve the 200s and 300s, and then pencil in the 32,340 for the, in the 100s for when we go back to approve those later.
You can't, you can't make a motion to pencil in.
Pencil in? Why not?
You just can't.
I just did. I'll second it.
All right. So motion by Mr. Keel to accept 200s and 300s and modify extra hire part-time to 32,340. Second by Mr. Mullenhauer. Any further discussion? All in favor in accepting voter registration with modifications? Say if I was saying aye.
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 All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
We are moving to Superior 3. Hopefully it'll be easier than it's actually.
Just a reminder, they input the numbers, we don't change them. It wouldn't be 150.
Thanks.
151?
Yeah, maybe it is.
Superior Court, 3, 151.
151, okay.
Later.
It's wrong.
I didn't get the memo, but was that what you handed out?
Okay.
Actually, 153.
153 is.
151 is what it actually is.
Got it.
Hello.
How are you?
Fine.
All right. Anybody have any questions?
We're below budget, by the way.
What's that?
We are below budget, by the way.
That's good news.
Job, Sharon. Did the, under psychological services, did that get moved from a different account?
It was created.
Yeah.
We never had that account.
Last year, the first year?
Yeah.
Yeah, this is the first year we have it.
Because we've had that on a few of these where it came from a different account.
I think it came in later in the budget hearings, it was, that's why it shows zero for requested. Okay.
You've only used $1,600 so far?
This year?
Yeah.
Well, that's probably what's been billed.
But we had to take some of this and use it for a couple that we had at the end of the year last year to pay.
Any other questions?
Motion is presented.
Second.
Two's and threes.
Motion to approve twos and threes by Mr. Novak, second by Mr. Keel. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have alcohol and drugs? Or is that?
Who's doing that?
We have lads.
You doing, oh, lads.
They're here, all by themselves.
At least it's cooled off a little bit.
Exactly.
So it's exactly the same as last?
As.
Yep.
That's what I recall. Should be an easy putt.
Motion to approve as presented.
Twos and threes, seconded.
Motion by Mr. Novak, second by Mr. Kessler. Any questions? All in favor?
None.
Aye.
Aye.
6-1, thank you.
Thank you.
Circuit Court. Let's, yeah.
Come on.
Come on.
Mr. New Roof, Mr. Gym Floor. The book does look nice on there.
New Vans.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, how are you?
I'm doing well.
Go ahead. We are, well, there's a group of them here, right?
26.
148.
17, or, 176, sorry.
148 was the last one.
Yep, yep.
Cool.
Here's going to find the $7,000 difference first.
All right, so.
3,000's in it.
Um, overtime, I see bumped it up a bit from what we adopted last year, but not near as high as what you requested last year.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anticipate being better than 120 this year?
Well, we started off with 45,000.
Yep.
And normally we pulled from some of our vacancies with our hires. We're up to the highest amount of hires that we've had since COVID, and we hired a nurse. So I took that into consideration, that's why I bumped it up slightly.
Okay.
So we normally would pull from, thank you, we normally would pull from, from one of those before we came back to you, and that's, that's really the only difference.
All right. And your shift supervisor bump, I'm assuming that's steps?
Yes.
Okay.
Counselor's a drop. Oh, yeah, dropped, okay.
Yeah. And then your youth specialists, that dropped quite a bit, I can't see that being steps.
Hmm. Yeah, I'm not sure about that one.
For this year, you're at 906, 309, and it looks like you're.
66.
And now it's down to 841,54. If you take the book in front of you.
Okay.
And you jump down to tab 176.
Bottom line on the first page.
I need to go back and check those numbers.
Okay. We're not formalizing 2, 100s accounts anyways, we're just discussing them today.
Okay.
Unit leader jumped quite a bit. Is that an additional head? That has been.
We went without a unit leader for a while, and we got another additional leader, that position was vacant.
That was a vacant position, it was approved, it was filled. Okay. So let's go down to twos and threes. Uniform slight bump, others.
Just what, can I add?
Yeah.
Go back to unit leader, why, I mean, the budget for last year was 194. This year's 249. About a 50-some thousand dollar increase. So if it was vacant.
Is it possible you moved someone from youth specialist into unit leader? Because there's a $66,000 reduction in, in youth specialist, and there's a $55,000 increase in.
You shift the personnel.
Yeah. We did hire, we did promote someone from youth specialist to unit leader. That'd be the only difference.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
If we had a position open for a long time, and that would seem something like it, we just would have appropriated it, then the sound, that doesn't sound right. So I think that has to be some of their, when it comes to us, those are, those are immediate ones, and we approve those.
Yeah.
There would have been, there would have been question on that, I don't remember that, that happening.
No, I don't either, unless this is something that was going back into '23.
I could have, I vaguely remember them talking about shifting from one to another.
Wouldn't this need to be reflected into the salary ordinance too?
Yes.
Yeah.
So I don't remember.
We didn't add a unit leader, I just, no, we didn't have one for a while.
But, Mr. Campbell, what happens here is that we don't have a, during our hiring practice, we don't, if you had this job not filled for a while, you had to come to us, not, we're not just filling because of vacancy.
Okay.
I don't remember, I don't recall this, so I think there must be some other confusion on that position.
It's probably worthwhile, I mean, obviously, we're not formalizing 100s today, but between now and the time that we do, probably reviewing this with this Ross, and then, if you wouldn't mind working with him as a liaison, working through the salary ordinance.
It should be the same as last year.
Yeah.
Yeah, it should be the same as last.
Yeah, minus step changes, that's the only differences.
Correct.
Okay. Let's move to the twos and threes. No big differences there, except uniforms and employee education and training.
That, that again is due to hiring more employees. We hired a nurse, and we're going to have to outfit her as well. We haven't had a nurse in probably three or four years. And then that's the additional employees that we've hired. So that's why there was a slight bump there.
Okay.
In request, I think it was up 1,000, just to accommodate her and the extra employees.
Okay. The employee education and training jumped 3,000.
Same, same as well. This is a year where we switched from handle with care to another safety training, and we sent one employee at a cost of about $2,000, but he'll come back and train the entire staff. But we also need a female in that position as well. So we're taking that into account. And then any additional training for our nurse, for her to acclimate from where she was at to our systems with DOC standards and so forth and so on.
Okay. Mr. Campbell, I, I remember this conversation coming up in the past, before you were here. Insurance bond, $25. I know right now we couldn't bond anybody for that amount, do you happen to know what that's, what that's for?
It's just been there, no, no. We, when I discussed that with Sharon Dumkowski, who handles all this, she says it's been there, and that we just left it there.
We bond elected officials, we don't bond.
But you're, but it looks, so you're actually spending it.
Okay. Yeah.
I know it's not a big amount, I'm just trying to figure out what.
Yeah, it's $25.
Yeah, I'm not worried about the amount, I'm just trying to figure out what it's there for.
Yeah.
Because it does, we don't, we do elected officials because our insurance does not cover for them.
Right.
But you're covered under our insurance.
Right. Like you said, it's been there for years and.
Randy, unless I misspoke.
Can you check and see just exactly who you're bonding?
Okay.
And let us know.
Because I think, because I think what I did is I checked when John, before John Cause I think, cause I think what I did is I checked when John, before John had left, and John goes, we're not bonding them, so that's, that's why I asked that question.
Okay.
Again, it's not a, it's not an amount that I'm worried about, I'm just trying to figure it out.
Who exactly in your department?
Wouldn't you be bonded?
Has to be bonded?
Okay.
Just to make, so we can make sure that they are properly bonded?
Yeah, example like, you know.
Wouldn't you agree?
I spoke.
Any other questions with twos and threes for 176? With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve twos and threes?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pressle, second by Mr. Keel, Mr. Kessler.
The $3,000 increase? Three, $4,000 increase? Read.
You guys good with that?
$1,000 in uniforms.
Totally. Yeah.
Okay. Is that any more discussion? Call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose?
Nay. Nay.
Five-two.
Keep us posted on the, the.
The discrepancy? Okay, I'll apologize for that, get that to you, the email is okay?
Yeah, it's fine.
It's fine.
Okay.
If it gets to the others' office as well.
Cause otherwise we won't make a change.
Absolutely.
Alright, let's go to public safety lit.
Thank you.
Oh, we have another fund, this is just general.
You've got more.
What's that?
You have four accounts yet to go, you have four more pages back there, you're good. You're not done yet, we're not sending you away.
Just keep flipping in the thing, you can do a lit public safety.
Okay.
It's really supplemental for your payroll.
Should be the very next page.
Got it. Lit public safety.
Alright.
No, no?
Yeah. Yeah.
That's it?
No, no.
1170-176?
He was, he, we had put a summary in the back.
Oh, I see, grab the tab.
And I don't want to get confused, we need to go back to where we were before, um, you were at 170. 176.
Six. Eleven seventy.
So you weren't here.
It looks good anyways, it's all 100s, it's flat.
Here's where we were, this is where we voted on, and then we go to this, and then you gotta flip the next few pages.
Okay.
Alright, perfect, well, being that we're looking at entirely 100 accounts, any questions before we move on to the next page? Alright, so now we're gonna go to JSC, uh, 2057-532, so other supplies, uh, now you're asking, in this case, the request is for 2610, previous requested budget was $1,000, and you've expended zero.
Again, again, that's for our nurse, just the things that she needs.
But it's listed under other supplies? What's another supply?
Well, this is from, this is from medical, so we could change the, to the account of medical supplies. You know. Knowing that they didn't have one before, they always had to go outside, source stuff, so, I'm just looking, we'll see if we have an account in here yet. We'd have to look up.
Should we change that name?
Instead of other supplies to medical? Is that what it's for?
In addition, yes. In addition to others, other things that we need it for.
Okay.
But it's regarding the nurse?
Yes.
Okay.
Alright, so do we wanna, I'll entertain a motion. Back one page, we haven't left out yet.
For Lit and Dorothy Crowley?
No, let's.
Dorothy Crowley is a separate fund.
So now we're.
We're just doing the Crowley?
Ye- yes, for Juvenile Service Center, 2057-532.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, motion by Mr. Kessler, second by Mr. Pressle. Any further discussion? Call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Nay. Nay.
Six-two, okay.
Five-two.
Five-two.
Six-two?
Six-two, we gained one.
And vote twice.
Push the button. Did you ask permission to approach?
Alright. Thank you, Darlene. Alright, let's move on to the Nova Fund, 4910-868. Total requested 62,800.
Just to remind you. This is what? Grant.
Is this grant funds, or is this income?
No, this is a, a non-reverting fund.
It's a non-reverting income.
I thought it was the grant.
What is other supplies?
In this case, other supplies went up $25,800.
What, um, we are in the process of moving, um, we have Nova in Michigan City, and the space that we occupied before, um, they're, they're rearranging the facility, so we're looking to get more kids into a space, so we're going to a larger space, and there's a possibility that we may move the Nova within our facility out there, and it's just to accommodate the ability to get more, um, youth into that program, that's what it's for.
So that's more of a project, not a, not a, you don't, for a fact, you're not doing it tomorrow?
No, well, it's, um, at the time that we had to get the, the budget in, um, we're still in negotiations with the Michigan City area schools, and how, how much this is gonna cost us.
So it's more of a consult item than it right now, than it's a budgetary process?
Correct.
When do you think you'll have that firmer number?
Once they approve, uh, the Space Force, they've, they are renegotiating with everyone out at that space.
Mr. President, we're allowed to, September to change this, we should stay with the original budget, and minus that, and if something comes about, you come back and ask us for it, cause we can always change this until September.
Okay. What's, is that a motion?
Since this fund is absolutely, cause this fund is a grant money, so yes, absolutely.
What's the other capital, you need a $2,000 increase on that?
Um, just, we had a new, um, Nova director, um, our old Nova director became our counselor, and we have a new Nova director in, and just to support the vision that she had for, for bringing in more kids.
I can't go with this.
It says.
No, I'm not supporting that.
Capital purchases.
No, I'm not supporting that.
You see the bottom line there?
Yes.
So that's capital purchases, that has to do with the director?
Mr. President, I make motions to adopt 2025's numbers.
Motion by Mr. Yagelski to adopt 2025 budget. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Novak, any further discussion?
If Nova, Nova changes, we can talk about it later.
He said if Nova changes, we can change it later.
And, and whatever the, the capital purchases?
Mm-hmm.
If you got something.
Open to it, but we probably need more info.
Yeah, right, right, so you know, we're, we're looking at, there's a, a $7,000, um, educational tool that is utilized by our Nova department, that helps us to interact with the school systems as well.
Right.
So it's an interactive television, as well as other computers, so to deal with the additional increase that we're looking for, so that's what that was for.
Okay. Come back if you.
Need to.
Motion by Mr. Yagelski, second by Mr. Novak, all in favor?
Is it? Is it two, three, and four?
Two, threes, and four.
Two, threes, and four is for Nova.
Thank you.
For Nova.
Be 100% sure?
Yep, that's okay.
And that was a seven.
Alright, well, next one, JSC electronic monitor.
Was there any, I didn't.
Didn't catch any.
I didn't.
Mark said aye.
I didn't, I did.
Question?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Mr. Campbell, uh, we've got, the court's trying to work with other departments, or have they said they're gonna try to work with you as far as this, the monitoring, ankle monitoring, just, um, this is, this is just, does, does anybody have to pay for their ankle monitoring?
Do you get reimbursed, is it?
We, we actually have, this is just a slight portion of what we have to pay, we get a $34,000 grant that we use to pay the, most of, of the GPS with.
But are your, are your clients, like in work release, required to pay a fee and compensate?
No.
So it's totally different structure?
Correct.
Answer my question, thank you.
Correct.
I know, that's why.
Answer my question.
So with a $1,000 budget and zero expended to, to date, are you expected to exceed this $1,000 budget for this year?
As of this point, no, but it's always dependent on how many clientele we have. That fluctuates from year to year.
Yeah.
It's hard to tell.
Mr. President, I make motion to adopt 2025 budget.
Motion by Mr. Yagelski to adopt 2025 numbers?
Second.
Second by Mr. Mullenhour, any further discussion? With that, all in favor?
Aye.
I opposed? Alright, now, JSC food program.
What the, if I ask it again, what's a, what's another supply? When it comes to food?
Just the, the.
Other supplies?
Does this make any sense? Seems to be an awful lot of other.
Twelve thousand five?
Mm-hmm. So you reduced the cost from 12,000 to five?
We reduced it from 12 to five.
And they haven't spent it down.
They haven't spent anything out of there yet, so.
Can you bring up that account there?
Yeah, I'm looking at it.
Not you, I'm sorry, you're looking at, I'm sorry. Joey?
Joey.
Can we look up at that account and see, this says, this does, the numbers don't jive across the board.
Can you pull that up?
JSC food program, eight, one, four, six, three, three, seven. Look at the monitor, but we don't have a monitor.
Running tallies off.
Oh, yeah.
And I do apologize, I would normally have, um, my administrator here.
That's okay.
She's not here, so. She went on vacation to see her mother.
Okay.
Sounds like she's gone all week.
Yeah, two weeks.
Good for her.
Wow.
How about if we do this, I'll just make a motion that we table this one, until, and you can send us something, and we can just do it, we're gonna have more budget here, and we'll just come back to this one.
Okay. I'm good with that.
That way he, he's got time to get information, I mean, there's.
So I, just because, before you table, are you tabling now, or can I ask a question real quick?
You can ask.
Then you give me the.
The JSC program is food program, as far as it, we don't really see it here, but is that the lunches, or what is that for?
Yes, it's for, for lunches for the kids.
Okay, I know I brought this up before, uh, I still think, because this has happened before, this, the schools do reimburse other areas for kids, especially during the summertime, get food and stuff, they're, they're still their responsibility, whether the schools like it or not. I'm still gonna go and argue the fact that they should be, they should be contributing food to this program. Because of that reason, and, you know, they can, they feed all summer long, children that are out, that are on, but these are their children too, whether they, just because they happen to be down this wrong path, does not change the program. They are reimbursed by the state for any child, not just, not just because we're special here or not.
It's his way of saying, can you talk to the school system and see if they would.
Both Michigan City and Leport.
To see if they would contribute to this?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, uh, that'd be a very difficult argument, um, considering that, you know, they're not in school, and.
Children not, children on summer vacation are not in school, but they are fed to.
He's saying, cause there's summer programs where they're still.
They feed them, I know they do, so, but I'm saying, we need to, I'm, I'm, it's not your fault, I'm just saying, these children are just going down the wrong path, but does it mean that they're not entitled to the same money that's, that's, that they're getting their dollars from, the federal dollars and state dollars?
Okay.
That's all, that's all I'm saying.
Alright, motion to table.
Motion to table, do I have a second?
One second.
You got?
You had asked any question?
Wait, hold.
Mark asked the question, what are the other supplies? I'm gonna guess that their food comes from the school system, but if they don't have, like, they bought.
No, it's not.
Things from cheese, like cheese from Stan's Food Service, commercial food systems, shoal dairy, and then Stan's again.
Okay.
Looks like if they're not getting like maybe cheese or cereal or something to supplement it with.
Actually, they, they bought up, because they've had to get increases from us, and that, and that's not the case, they come and said that, that's for food, cause they're cooking. Okay, I believe that, I believe you're talking about supplies, but I think something's misunderstood about the food, because I've asked this questions more than once over the years, we're not getting reimbursed from the school.
Sure.
We don't get reimbursed, I don't think, do we?
They food, they drop food off for you?
No.
I'm saying, I told you.
Do you purchase food?
We purchase.
We purchase.
Are you maybe thinking about the general fund, which has $63,000 that's appropriated for food?
I think that's their, that's their daily feed.
That's their daily center.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I'm gonna change my motion to table, I'm just, motion to approve, so.
The 5,000?
What?
Through the 5,000?
We don't know what it is.
Is it all food?
What have we?
So then we need to change.
What are we voting for?
It, yeah, it's a fair question, I, I, I need to provide more information, I, I.
Hold it over.
Okay, that's a fair question.
Yes.
As you're saying.
Second. Motion to table, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
We can read the summary of that one.
Thank you, Director Campbell.
Thank you, sir.
Alright, so, since we're back caught up a little bit, let's bring up the circuit court.
And he did include the, uh, capital plan.
Dean, did you wanna discuss anything that was in that, or are you good for now? Okay.
Thank you. Hi, Judge, how are you? Good.
Did you need this?
Actually, that's for everybody's drive.
We left it there for everybody.
Gotcha.
Do you wanna flip to your page, you're more than, welcome. You're more than welcome to flip to your page if you need it.
I'm sure I've got what I need, but.
Alright.
I will if I do.
Your Honor, how are you?
I'm good, how is everybody else?
Doing well.
Where are we at?
So is it true that Christine's retiring? I have to ask every year.
You asked me that.
Every year, I know.
Well, she loves where she is.
Forty-eight, she loves it. Alright, so for the most part, we're just covering twos and threes, but just discussing ones, it looks like everything you have here is steps, in terms of the increases for Secretary Admin Assistant, uh, Court Porter, you've got the stipend.
Office supply.
JDAI, uh, coordinators, slight bump, and those are all just steps? Okay, so how about the step, the jumping?
Yeah, it's totally just step, and according to the chart.
Okay.
Nothing unusual or different.
Alright, how about the jumping office supplies?
Do you want me to do it, or you? We've been, I've been doing the budget for circuit for, this is probably my 30th year, we have been on $6,000 the whole time.
Okay.
And we're good?
I know, but since then, we've got more magistrates, more people, and it seems like the significant difference that we didn't have before was the fact that all of the cartridges for these printers have really substantially increased, um, which we have spoken with Darlene about, we're gonna try to start getting, um, them from Amazon, should save us some money, we'll do what we can, but, um, I think we need a little more than 6,000.
Can I?
We're buy, we're not buying anything unusual, or in.
Go ahead.
Kinda, unrelated but related, but Darlene?
What, Mike?
How, how come we don't, how come we don't How come we don't, how come we don't limit the printers that are available so maybe you could buy and bulk the printer cartridges? And when they need them, we could get them and we'd make sure you had the money in your budget. Instead of everybody buying, and this isn't at you because there was people here before you. Everybody buying whatever printer they want and then everybody's got to have a different printer cartridge.
So we have previously worked with Kemp's, they got the contract. We tried, you know, to have everybody go to big copiers and share them between multiple offices. Some people still want a printer on their desks. So the copiers I do maintain. The printers, I can't buy-
If they want a printer on their desk, I don't necessarily have an issue with that, but it's got to be a Canon XP32 and you've got-
Because that might work for you, but it isn't going to work for him, or it isn't going to work for her. I mean, you would have to do a standard printer that does scanning.
I mean-
Or-
Okay.
I know, I know that-
Copier in the hallway.
Kemp's has an office machine that is a desktop machine that does the scanning, does the capability of sending email, has the capability of printing and mass copying, but it's still a desktop type model. There would be, that would fit within a regular repertoire of what Kemp's provides. And that way you can have the, like that? The, maintain the same stock of what you need for cartridges.
And we tried to get most of them through them. But again, some people just need printing. They don't need, you know, the copier or scan the email. So if we can save money-
You could have maybe three different models that just go, this is what we're using. You know what I'm saying? And then-
If I can get-
And then they need a printer cartridge, they go, Darlene, need a printer cartridge.
If I can get all the department heads and elected officials to agree.
You make that sound like it's a heavy lift, come on.
We're very amenable to everything.
We can help them agree. We just wouldn't approve a printer unless it goes through your, I mean, that's the way-
We've been trying to do that for years.
Do not look at me in this conversation.
Mr. Auditor, it looks like you have some input.
Yeah, I, when I was with you, I did not know what goes on, in reality. We have departments that are buying office supplies that are printers, small, simple desktop printers. They're anywhere from 127 to $300 and change. But they're just buying them, they're not going through Darlene. I've had to go back and ask some of them to make sure, and Mr. Yagelski knows on a few occasions I've done that, when I catch them, but when there were single issues at the beginning of the year, and we've had several departments buy somewhere up to four or five of them. And I don't understand why everybody needed one, especially after the time that I had with you just trying to get a few. But that's what's been happening. They've been sidestepping because they're not recognizing that there's a purchase policy on any computer item. They think it's just small enough, cheap enough. And I'll end it there, but that's what I've experienced by, and they're buying it both, Amazon. Amazon has just been re-upped, but they did buy on Amazon before we shut it down. And then it was being purchased at Kemp's.
Mr. Yagelski. About 15 years ago, we took on the challenge of getting rid of all these excess copy machines slash whatever. Then today, of course, we also find out there's nothing to 8,000 dollar machine. But see, we're not managing this. They're managing us. We have totally lost control again in this. I know I brought this up twice this year on these companies, subjects come up on. Okay, like I said, get rid of large copy machines. We don't need them and then we'll take them out. And if they can share, if they need to do a lot of printing, we have the machines available that they can print on and to loan anytime they want to. We've lost control and this was not the way it was set up. And I'm telling you that it's gone awry in the last 10 years. And it's happened twice this year already. So I don't tell you guys, this is not a good, this is not a good program. Unless we have alternative, again, like take their large copy out and then have put three desktops in it, that's fine. You get rid of an 8,000 dollar machine, big difference.
Yeah, for sure.
So back to you guys.
Well, just to comment on yours, I mean, obviously our situation would be different than other perhaps departments because we have jurors that we have to notify. So there are thousands of notices that get copied and mailed and sent. And then while that's happening, other individuals are trying to do work and print and you can't. So, you know, I sometimes have even come off the bench and said, hey, I need to print something off a case law or whatever. They're doing jury instructions. So it's important that we maintain the large copier, but to also continue to have people work and do what they need to do while that's happening. That's why we had the printers and I think they were fairly reasonably priced when we did get them.
My thing isn't against you guys, it's just that when you get a printer, you go, is what I'd like to see is you go to Darlene, you say, here's what we need it to do. And she says, these are the models to choose from because we have the cartridges. And then she would maintain a supply of the cartridges. So we're not buying 10 different kinds of cartridges, you know, it could be the printer you want.
And that makes sense, if I could interject, but we did go to Darlene and she did approve what we bought. It wasn't very expensive and it's not so much as how many, as the fact that everything's gone up so much. We're also in our supplies, running through some jury stuff, like those little booklets that we give to the jury, all the envelopes and all the things that we have to supply to them. A lot of that's been coming out of there too. And it's just more expensive and I'm only telling you that it's been 30 years at $6,000. I would even, you know, just ask you to consider that.
Also, real quick, we used to actually have a handle on it.
Yes.
And we would buy, you know, certain models and I stocked all the cartridges when somebody needed it. But-
Why'd you quit doing that?
Because departments and elected officials started wanting versus, I did most of the black and white. We really didn't cover any color and nowadays, people want color.
History started out, it started out with, and you guys do know this, we had departments using credit cards. So we did not know about it and they were using their own credit cards. We have pulled those back in since then, but now we have Amazon accounts. So we don't have no control of this. This is the exact reason why. It's not because Darlene can't do it, it's because we have outside sourcing coming in. I think you, go ahead.
When you're done, because when it came to Amazon, we shut that down and now I have line item veto on every purchase that's being made on our Amazon account. I don't enjoy it, but that's what I had to put in place because people were buying things, especially last year. That weren't, nobody was looking.
All right, Judge, this has nothing to do with you, by the way.
And I'm sorry, it's got nothing to do with that.
I'm just ranting, just let me go.
Eventually you run out of steam.
I mean, they did check with me, Circuit Court did check with me and let me know what they were buying. But when you go to these smaller individual printers, a lot of times it's cheaper to throw that printer away and buy a new one than it is to buy the new cartridges.
Yeah, that's where they make the money.
That's kind of-
They make the money off the cartridges, not the printer so much.
So we beat up the printer topic quite a bit, but there's two other items on your request here that are much larger than that. Nice little transition there.
Yes.
Psychological Services and Interpreter and Translators, can you give us some background on those two?
Sure, probably a couple of months ago, it came to my attention at a judge's meeting that Superior 1, Superior 2 and their budgets, they're together in regards to the psyche valves. And when I heard how much they had, I divided that by two and they were at $21,000. And I'm not quite sure why Superior 1 and 2 would get $21,000, whereas Circuit Court, formed by Congress, gets 11,000. And we have major felonies, F6s, all the way up to murder. And we are burning through it and have burned through it, to be honest with you. And there is currently pending a murder case that I will be required, if it proceeds to trial and maybe even before, I will need to get a psychiatrist hired. And that is the court's responsibility, not the defendants or public defenders. That's the court's responsibility to take care of that because it's a insanity defense. So if that proceeds, then we are going to need additional funds.
Now, looking at it, it looks like you're spending through them at a pretty quick clip. I mean, obviously you're right on the heels of Psychological Services and you've already exceeded your Interpreter and Translator's budget. I don't see any reason why we would be able to argue this much, especially with what's going on as of late with a lot of the detainees and whatnot, so.
And these are non-negotiable, we're constitutionally obligated to provide these services, right?
Right, right. And again, I just wanted to be on the same footing as Superior 1 and 2 have. Again, theirs is at 21,000, I believe it was last year, they were given 42,000. So I'm just asking for the same amount.
Okay, Mr. Auditor, you have a question?
All of those costs, all courts are much higher than they were in previous years. They are coming back to you, they're asking to get it from other funds, wherever, but you are going to see more of it. I think there's something for July, but this is something that has been very noticeable. These are things that I've asked questions about, not necessarily of your court, but this is something that is very prevalent by looking through claims and seeing what's going on. So I would encourage you to fund it for her.
Good input, thank you. Any further questions from the council?
I just got a quick question on interpreters. Did we already approve and increase for this year? Have you been, you haven't been before? I mean, you've already spent, over expended your budget.
Well, you have to remember, the interpreters, that's for all the courts, correct?
Correct. Would you mind having a supplement? I know I probably should have given it to you sooner. Could I hand you something?
But do you need to come for more money now?
We may be back.
Or was there a transfer?
What happened was, we went through-
I just want to commend you on making the judge get up and hand up. That is great. Obviously you've been there for a long time and she respects you.
Maybe it's because I'm the old girl.
Thank you.
Chris, can you send us one?
Oh, I have for you too.
Can I ask a question then? I do know that, you know, we do pay attention to a lot of Chicago news. And they talked about this, there's a lot of the AI translators that are working with this. Is any of that stuff work at all for the courts? And how does that approve in Indiana compared to-
Now interesting. Go ahead, I'll let you, we've been told.
We've been told that we have to use, not want to if we want to.
The state of Indiana says this?
The state of Indiana says that you have to use certified interpreters.
Okay, because I-
It's a huge difference.
I was talking about Illinois, so I didn't, that's why I asked.
It's not our choice.
But isn't it, I think there's also the, the ones you can do on the phone, they're doing away with that now.
Yes.
I'm sorry, missed that.
You can get interpreters over the phone, but now they are going to be doing away with those.
Google translator. Right, I understand that. So, of course-
Yeah, yeah.
What's that? I know that's what I was going to, okay.
I don't know about you, Mark, but if my life and liberty hangs in the balance, I don't think I want Google Translate being the one speaking on my behalf.
I understand, but you know, I said it for a reason because Illinois actually does, they're doing it. So that's where it came up, Indiana apparently isn't. I'm okay with that, I just wanted to ask a question. However it happens, it happens.
All right.
Could I add something else? We've been getting interpreter grants every year. And the reason we have all the courts together, just a little history, is that if we do it all together for all the courts, we are always maybe likely to get more money. And in the past, we've gotten quite a bit of money, but last year we only got 12,000. We got through that before the end of last year and it was supposed to last till like right now. And then just recently, we were also awarded $8,000, which is a whole lot less than we have in the past. And their explanation was that, in fact, there's so many more people that are applying now. So we are actively looking for grants if we can.
Judge, since you had your meeting, and Chris, you might have been in a meeting too. So we have a total number of all five courts, what they're spending for this per year?
You mean how many courts are we using?
Are using interpreters.
All of the courts are-
How much, how much would that be for five courts? Do you happen to know?
That is five courts.
I heard you say three, I heard you say three, so maybe I misunderstood, joke.
Well, it's really four. Judge, I can't speak for Judge Thorne, but I'm not paying his.
They just left, yeah. Okay, that's the number for everybody but Thorne. Okay, thank you.
He doesn't have it on there. He has Psychological Services, but not Translations. All right, have we beat this one to death?
I think we have.
Is that a motion?
Yep.
For?
Approved to, or deuce threes.
Second. Motion to approve twos and threes by Mr. Kessler, second by Mr. Keel. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Just because of the office.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So if you- We're looking at interpreters, we're looking at just one language or you have multis, is it?
We have one that's specifically Spanish. We have also looked into another one that has multiple languages available, so.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
They have?
Yeah.
Superior 1, she says, has utilized Mandarin and Chinese as well.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I'm not translating that one.
No, me neither. All right.
Thank you ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We are on juvenile probation.
That's it, 154.
That is 154.
Darlene, Darlene, Darlene. Their copy, their copy machine supplies, they should have no copy machine supplies. $2,361, we took everybody's away. They should be under you, right? Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Yagelski.
A number 20004, copy machine supplies. What are you, who are you dealing with on that? I know, is it, what is that for? $3,361. Oh, oops, sorry. Oh, I skipped one. I scared you, never mind, sorry. I'll listen, I'll listen.
Settle down. No more copiers, Mark. We're not talking printers, that's where we're going.
We're going.
Your changes in the 100 categories are all step changes, right?
Go for it, Mr. Novak.
I'm going to ask, I guess I'm asking the auditor. There never was any money in there for training before. It wasn't in a different account and we moved it into a separate account before I asked.
I'm not aware of it.
Now I'm turning to you.
We have not had money in training for years.
Okay. Now you need it?
Yeah.
We do.
If I may.
Please.
We have an annual conference that, let me start with this here. Each probation officer is mandated to have 12 hours of training, evidence-based training, to be, continue to be certified. And so there's an annual training for this here at the Annual Conference of Court Service. And it provides that. It's basically a three-day training. And so we would naturally have to stay overnight for that. The training itself is free, but where the cost comes in, the place is having to stay overnight, you know, gas mileage and so forth. We currently have like $2,000 in our own probation user fees. So that's not enough money to pay for, to pay for that. And we have cell phones and other bills that we have to pay out of that small fund that we have there. So that's why we're asking for that amount of money.
But wouldn't that be better called travel than it would be education and training?
Well, we're using it for those purposes, for the training. It would only be used for educational purposes.
Do you have an estimate of how much you spent on travel for conferences in the past?
To be honest with you, to my knowledge, this is something that we're just starting to revamp up, you know. So it's not something, for the last two years where we've done it, so, you know, it's kind of hard to say.
Did you pay for it last year?
So what we did last year is we went through grants. We had to get a grant. The juvenile services were kind enough to pay for one of our probation officers also. Circuit Court as well was kind enough to pay for one. So we're kind of reaching out to different, you know, areas here, it's just that-
Circuit's not kind enough this year?
We don't want to continue to pull it from, you know, if we had to.
Just ask.
Yeah, so.
How many people is that for?
So we have nine probation officers on roll and so that would be it.
Given that it's a requirement that you guys get this training, I'd make a motion to approve the 200s and 300s.
Second.
All right, so a motion and second from Mr. Keel and Mr. Kessler, approve 200s and 300s as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
All right, MC Circuit Court Juvenile, 2511.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and second from Mr. Kessler and Mr. Novak. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Nine.
Opposed?
Nay.
The record show they have a capital assessment plan attached.
All right, thank you for that. We'll probably be discussing those later, further on, not this week. Anything else for us?
I don't believe so.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Can I just ask real quick, do we have anybody coming, not you guys, not you. A bunch of printers, yeah. Do we have anybody coming that's on the schedule tomorrow afternoon?
We can have, we can have 911 here.
Yeah, she said she's going to come ready whenever we want her.
So we've got- We could do the auditors.
County Council. Surveyor, surveyor's been in several times today. Adult probation, treasure, animal shelter, I think.
Might have looked more of the, is there a reason why HR is so late? Is she, is she not-
They request these late times or no?
Is she not here, maybe?
She said she, I don't know that for-
But it'd be nice if we can incorporate some of these.
So who's, so for some of the proposed ones, who's the liaison for some of these that we're proposing right now? 911?
911's already coming.
911's already coming, so they come in, so let's have them right after the clerk and the board.
Let me ask the surveyor if he can make it.
And then ask the surveyor and that gets us covered down to probably close to Pioneer Cemetery.
He sent the email.
Animal shelter, I think Connie's presenting for that because they don't have a director.
Okay, then let's cover that one as well and if we can get that in after Superior 4. Unless we get moved through these others, couple pretty quickly. So if you want to come forward while we're getting our ducks in a row. Was this planned? Shirts.
Dress code day.
Dakota says she can do weights and measures today if you want to bump them up.
Sure.
Okay.
You calling him?
He just texted me, he heard what we were saying, so.
So he's going to plan to be here today?
On over. This should be easy.
All the way to the end.
Here is.
Well, sir. There we go.
Who are you emailing so I know?
Okay.
All right, we'll do John.
100s are clear. Office supplies. Requested and approved 10-5 last year, asking for $14,000 this year. Anything, what's driving that?
Copiers.
Copiers? Mark, breathe.
Ink. It's ink.
So we actually, the big ones that we have in the offices now, we're going with something smaller to save money. And we're doing the less expensive and the big ones. That way, if you have a smaller job, you use the smaller machine. But if you have a doozy of a job, we still needed the big one.
The big office machine with staple capability and all that stuff.
All the goodies.
And all of this stuff went across the IT board and got blessed by Darlene.
Actually, actually it had, Darlene walked in. Actually, it has. And also, what they do for your particular offices is that during election time, we'll be wheeling down extra machines for their thing.
Good.
So they do work very well with us on that.
All right. I love the fact that printing in OT office dropped to zero, even though you've spent 3,300 or almost 3,400 this year.
That was actually a question because it's supposed to be other than office supplies, but everything we use is office supplies.
We don't understand the other than. What else are we?
What else would we print?
That's what the O slash T is, other than.
That's what I've been told, other than. What is it?
I was thinking of the stuff you sent out to the printer, but that was my fault all these years, but.
So what is the $3,300 that was been spent?
Well, we end up doing printing out of it, but I don't know that they're considered other than office supplies because we don't print anything that's not needed. I mean, it's still an office supply. I don't know what the.
That's what I would consider it.
What the classification is? If you have something that says what other than is?
I don't have anything. You've got, obviously you had more than I did because I didn't know what the O and the T meant.
Printing overtime.
Yeah, exactly. All right. Maintenance contracts. Didn't ask for any last year, but we're up for $1,000 this year. You know what the maintenance contract is? Yeah?
It's for our new microfilm reader.
Okay.
We charge like an annual contract fee, like I think it's around 800.
Periodic maintenance where the things continue to function.
Agrees for the software and so on, yeah.
Okay.
Did you just need it last year?
It's here.
We paid for it somehow else because we didn't realize that we were gonna have to pay it.
So how else did you pay for it?
Probably than other than office supply.
Is that the account we want to go after? The one being everything?
Yeah, right. All right. Talk to me about employee education and training. Heather?
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 That's the Clerks Conference.
Yeah, it's the Clerks Conference. Again, I think you guys are seeing that everybody's having some issues getting things funded, getting things approved. So we've been told, put it in your budget. And I know that for.
Told you, Heather?
Who told you that?
It was.
Justin?
No, it was not Justin. It was Adam. No, I'm just kidding.
I did not recommend that. It was.
No, it was the commissioner's attorney that suggested everybody put this into their budget.
He used to work for us. We got rid of him. We got.
Yeah?
We got a new one, so that's probably why he did that.
Really, I mean, I think what you're seeing is that these conferences, whether they're state-called, whether they, they don't all have the continuing education credit times, but they are still very important to these officers and these offices and the department heads because if you're not there to get the information, you're not getting the information.
Heather, the idea, of course, is that we're policing it. It has nothing to do with that we're saying that that's not an important one or not.
Right. I understand that. However, I just, due to a medical emergency, had to miss our big election, or our big Clerks Conference, which means that in order to get all of my hours for the year, I should have been, I put in a request for the Courts and Clerk Conference and couldn't get approval out of the commissioners. This is for the Courts and the Clerk. I think it's pretty important.
And it was part of your statutorily required continuing education credit?
It does have continuing.
And you need to have that in order to?
I need to have X amount of hours. So now, for the fall conference, typically I just go to the Northern Conference for the clerks. I'm gonna have to drive my butt down to Southern Indiana the day after to attend that one too in order to make up my hours.
But just to be clear, the commissioners are interfering with your statutory requirement to fulfill a certain number of training hours?
Yes.
Good. Okay, we can then clear out their travel budget later because we've just put it in all the departments.
And that's what we're here asking for.
Big problems, guys. Sounds good on paper.
I think something has to be done.
You make two statements. They shouldn't be. It's our job to straighten that out. It's not, it's not one where you go to a store back and everybody's, whatever.
And I will say, the elections conference, and I know that we're not quite there yet, but the elections conference in December, what I'm told every year, because I have, I have a county credit card. I have a $5,000 limit on it. But, so I pay, I pay as much as I can for everybody to go. But what happens is, here we are right before Christmas, everybody's trying to be reimbursed for everything. And oftentimes, what we're hearing is, well, hurry up and get it in because we're running out of money. And that's what we're getting from the commissioner's office. So again, I'd rather have this in my budget and just do what I need to do.
All right.
I'm sure a lot of, that's the easy way.
I understand it's the easy way, but.
Doesn't fix.
Doesn't fix the problem.
Trying to do.
I can't fix that problem, but this is my problem.
I mean, this, you guys are liaison. Have you guys tried to talk about this before?
We've talked through this, and it came down to when, where, what I took cred in is the fact that the commissioner's attorney is actually making the recommendation.
But that's just because he doesn't want, okay, let's just play the game in this one here. He doesn't want these guys little fighting back and forth. He decided to be the attorney now, and he's supposed to make amends to everybody. That's just making amends. That's not actually doing his job. If he was here right now, tell him that in front of his face, I could care less. You know, you might as well, at this point, let everybody have their postage bag. Just destroy everything that you worked for. And go ahead, that sounds like a great idea.
Yeah, what we gotta get to the point of is the fact that we have to fix it with having elected officials and department heads working together.
Attorney's doing it just to please those commissioners. You know what he's doing.
So how do you propose that we change the commissioner's behavior?
We got money here. We control the budget. We control their budget. I've done it before. I told you how to do it. We talked about, you and I have talked about it yourself, personally. You know how we can do it. We control their budget.
I think you talked about it at the, somebody that came through here a little while ago.
Yes, sir, I did.
All you gotta do is, if you're having an issue, correct me if I'm wrong, what you've stated, if you're having an issue getting the money to go to conference, come here.
But again, we don't always have the dates and time. You guys meet once a month, which.
You know, when the conference.
I've seen conferences.
We don't always know. I didn't know about the Courts and Clerks until two weeks, two, three weeks before.
How do they get people to show up?
That doesn't make any sense.
Because everyone else isn't having the issues that we are.
No, no, no. If courts knew about it because there's pre-dates for the year or for this.
But I had, I had a difficult time finding the information. I didn't plan to go because I had planned to attend the big Clerks Conference.
In the future, you should be able to, you should be able to know.
We should, but until that agenda comes out and everything else, we don't know.
So we beat this one to death?
I think we should have.
I'm sure we could. All right. Office equipment and furniture, $7,000.
Really?
Why did we put that?
Well, I think that, you'll see, you'll note that it's dash accumulating. So before you guys sent out the request for the long-term planning thing, we wanted to add a line in that possibly you could make a fund that we could accumulate money in because last time we needed chairs, it wasn't there. Or we needed computers, it wasn't there. We're gonna need desks, it's not there. So that was, I don't know if that'll have to be kicked off now that we did the long-term planning for Mr. Auditor.
I think it was, let's ask for $7,000 in office furniture, and that'll distract them, and then we'll get the.
You got it.
Well, it didn't work because we're smarter than that, maybe.
I think we were just trying to plan ahead.
Try to get it into the budget.
You did it in a capital project.
This, this isn't a non-reverting account. It goes back to the general every, at the end of every year, so.
Right.
We're talking about building up. They just mentioned about building up.
Okay. Any further questions?
Out of the items that were in your capital asset plan, was there anything in there that you felt like was critical to be funded for next year that was an office supply item?
The copiers. We need printers.
Like, as in they're not working right now, or?
We have a couple not working. The other, the other things we're gonna need would be more scanners. I can come to you guys, take money out of the perpetuation fund, and I can, I can handle that on my own. I think we've replaced most of the chairs for right now.
Except for sub three, but yeah.
Yeah. I mean, mine's a little raggedy, but I don't care. The one thing I definitely would like to put on your radar and will be added to this, new voting panels, which is not what you guys want to hear. And it does not have to happen today, but it's gonna have to happen soon. Luckily, we have enough extra machines in this county that if they need parts for right now, we have them, but they're only gonna give us a couple of years.
What year were they, old are they?
Probably my age. No, I'm just kidding. They're not that old.
These aren't punch cars. It was Lynn's feedback, yeah.
Yeah, it's been a while.
I think they upgraded the board's wants.
Yes.
One of the mistakes I think we made in the past on this one, I guess was under Lynn, but not because it was her fault. State wasn't, there was actually grants to help take care of that after the fact, after we already purchased.
It's always after the fact.
Right. So I don't, have you heard anything since you guys do go to these conferences that there's something in the makes of?
I'm not there to find out right now.
This one, this one. That's for the wrong, that's for the wrong one anyway. But no, I'm serious, in your own clerks one, have they mentioned anything? Because that.
Not yet.
We missed out that opportunity last time again.
Right. In the tax bill.
We just seen there the GIS flyover. We missed on that opportunity. We paid for.
They are, they are giving you guys one suggestion, and that's to pay for it by raising taxes, which I, that's what I'm gonna say, and then I'm shutting it.
Yes, please.
Yeah.
Anyway, I just want to make sure we don't miss out that opportunity. If there's something you hear.
If there is a grant, you guys know I'm going to apply. I did learn when I applied last time, I have to come to you and let you know what I'm doing, so that, because we're gonna have to pay for it, and then they reimburse, which I didn't know. I just thought they were gonna send me a nice check, but they don't do that.
Gotcha. Yes.
Office supplies, again, in the maintenance contract, you said you were taking that out of office supplies before?
We took it out somewhere.
You took it out of somewhere, but you're including office supplies by $3,500 and adding a line item for the $1,000.
But she's taken 3,300 out of the printing other than, or, yeah, printing other than office.
And I'm good with that.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's just up.
The $7,000 probably can come out too if you guys are gonna follow through with the long-term, three-year plan. Because that was like our own way of trying to institute some kind of program that we could have money for things that are gonna be coming, that we're gonna need, that we don't have any.
We understand you guys are trying to take care of the entire county, but we're trying to take care of our office.
And that's what we ask you to do.
I think that, and maybe there's a difference in what our objectives are with the capital projects plan. Like, I think the goal is more so that we're not blindsided by large surprise expenditures where a department comes in and says, oh my gosh, we need $150,000 or something for a contractor, or we need, you know, $75,000 for a vehicle, or whatever the case may be.
Voting machines.
Voting machines, yes. Or you show up, you know, surprised, we need a half a million dollars for voting machines, and we're supposed to figure out where to get it on the fly. That doesn't work well.
That's why there's the heads up, because I'm guessing it's gonna be more than that.
Well, for the smaller items that need replacing every five to 10 years, how do you suggest you pay for that if you don't put it on the long-term plan?
You come to us.
Yeah.
You come to us.
So, and that's, that's why right now, we had, what was it, the $3,000 or something? We're just trying to have that money available so that when we need something, we're not coming back all the time for additional appropriations. And if we don't need anything, you guys get it back at the end of the year.
I think what we're going towards, Mark, is if you look at it early in this year, we had three different requests for new vehicles, three successive months from three different departments. And those perfect storms, where we all of a sudden were looking for high-dollar items, try to at least forecast it a little bit and saying, okay, we'll replace it two months earlier than.
I agree, but they didn't put it in their budget for that. So I think we kind of put, like you said, we kind of went the wrong direction of what it was planning for. We wanted to know what the long-term projects were. That's all it was the goal. We weren't, we don't want you to budget for it.
But from my end, I see these guys coming at you for all this money for, you know, important things, vehicles and, and things that they need. And then I don't want to come say, well, I need, I need, you know, $2,000 for chairs that are breaking down.
But you've.
Because it seems very.
But you've come, and it's always been easy for you to do that. It's not a big problem.
We just put it in the budget. If we don't need it, goes right back.
I'd rather have you come to us because we want to make sure that people actually need it. There's needs and wants.
And we understand that.
That's the part, that's the problem we have.
I had employees buying their own chairs.
Yes, well, nobody came.
No, we're not.
No, we're not.
Let me go on record as no, we're not. All right.
I'm gonna make a motion that we approve all the twos and threes as presented, except for employee education training, scratch that, and office supplies, equipment, scratch that. So I'm approving the, everything else.
Okay.
The two $7,000 amounts, Mr. Novak?
What's that?
The two $7,000 amount you're taking off?
Correct.
All right. A motion for Mr. Novak. Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
No second.
Second by Mr. Kessler. Any further discussion?
I think there will be more discussion when we get to the commissioners.
No, it's what I'm actually gonna invite. So with that said, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, ayes?
Nay.
How many ayes, please?
Only ayes.
Aye.
One, two, three, four. Nays?
Nay.
Nay. Four, three. Keel?
Aye.
Nay.
Mike, Keel, myself, and Yagelski.
We're three, yeah.
Four, three, passes.
It's back to the four, four, counting to eight again.
I had lunch. I'm now waking up. We're good to go. All right. Let's go to the election board. Madam Clerk.
For conferences is the standard amount.
Here, let's start at the top. Board members. What defines a board member this year?
In 2025, we don't have elections. So that, what is it, $9,000 that we have this year? That is just the county election board members. That's it.
And the 170 goes to?
That is going to pay all of those poll workers, early voting workers, all of that.
Okay. Thirty-eight.
A little confusing when it says board members.
Well, yeah.
Is there a better account for that, Mr. Auditor?
Board members slash poll workers.
I believe that we can accommodate that, and we'll work on getting some account numbers and get it to you as well. I do want to ask real quick, do you know how many, because you've, everybody should notice, there is a big reduction from '24 to now. Most of that is due to the reduction in the polling places because you're now in the.
We have vote centers.
Vote centers, thank you, versus voting places. And so I just don't know how many workers that you use roughly. I don't need to know right now. I just figured that I'm gonna just break it and split it, but I wanted to make sure everybody was aware that there is a tremendous reduction in there.
Just for bookkeeping purposes, does it make sense to put the, the non-board members into something like the part-time seasonal?
Poll workers.
Well, is there a poll workers account?
But some of this money, some of this money was just taken out of that line item and put, put down differently.
Okay.
Like for the janitor services, the meals, the rent, the rent for any polling locations that we have to pay for, things like that. What we were running into was, when we were trying to pay these things, it's coming out of this other account, and the auditor's And the auditor's office didn't like that. So we had to make some changes.
I guess what I'm looking for is a separate account that is still a 100 series to where it's a check to a person. That you, like you would for any of your early voting and your poll workers and those sorts of things. But then all of your services, like the janitorial and whatnot that you're having to do with the other places, that's a service and that comes out of a 300 account and that makes sense to me.
I just want to make sure the meals, is that the, the $12 allowance?
It is.
I just.
Yeah.
Just trying to make sure because all of a sudden it's new on here.
So while we have reduced, um, some of the expenses, we have a ways to go and we're aware of that. I, I'm guessing that we're not going to have 38 vote centers forever. When we're required to have eight, I don't think we should reduce it to eight either, but I, I think that we can, we needed a couple of years to, to take a look, see where people are voting, where they're not voting. And now I'm, my guess is that for 2026, the county election board will make some adjustments.
30 seems to be sticking in my head pretty strongly. I don't know why.
Questions?
Mr. Yagelski.
How are we doing with the voting van?
People are, it's, it's, was so nice last year, especially in the, the general election. That thing was busy. There were lines.
I meant the reliability of the van, yeah.
That's why we've, I mean, we've added for the, the gas, the fuel, the oil, we're asking for some, some maintenance. Because if something happens, I don't have a, I didn't have a budget for that.
I understand. That's why, that's why I was asking.
Yeah. So we've, we've added all of that.
And this is the.
Highway garage didn't take care of it?
No, they didn't.
They, they do. The sheriff's garage finally got that battery to stop acting up, which was wonderful. There's nothing worse than you send people out and that, and they call you and say, oh, it's dead.
I don't know where else.
That's, that's not a good feeling.
Found you short, huh?
Yeah.
All right. Printing other than office. I still don't understand that name, but we'll go with.
Outside printing.
For elections, for elections, that does make sense because we do have to, we have to have a lot of stuff printed for us. Our, our poor printers to print out 38 ballots, the ballot is, is thick.
Nope.
Not only would we be standing at the copy machine for four days, but we'd burn them up. So. Things like that have to be sent out. We order envelopes, we.
Ballots?
Yeah, ball, yeah, ballots.
Okay. Any other questions?
No sir.
I'm looking for a motion.
So just real quick, on conferences, you, last year you spent $1,500. In a big election year. I, I, I'm looking at what I got. You got to look at the book. If you want to see what we're looking at, it's in the book.
It's in the book?
Yeah.
Under 131 for you.
Have 131.
Where's your glasses?
Here, want these?
Not going to be able to read it anyways.
You want my hair?
Here, I'm just going to give you the books. I can't find it. Hang on.
It's an order.
You have yours?
About a third of the way in. See it?
130.
Yeah, I found 130.
I mean, she did. She reduced it some, but. I think she just moved some.
30003. First page.
Travel.
You see it? If you go all the way to the heart, it's right.
That's what you spend.
Which you spent last year. $1,521.
I can't answer that other than I know all of the. I think that the commissioner's office paid for it, other than, um, the rooms which were put on the county credit card and then paid for by the auditor's office. So that was probably just travel, probably just the mileage, mileage and any meal reimbursements.
Sounds right.
That's a, that's a huge conference and it is, it is myself, it is my chief deputy, our elections deputy, the other two board members. And the two co-directors in voter registration. Since they don't have the county card. That's why we just handle their, their reservations and everything, just so that they don't have to wait for reimbursement.
Okay.
And the hotspots are for the?
Poll books.
Poll books.
Poll books.
And then the legal services, 5,000?
Well, the last year or so, every time we've needed any kind of legal advice or legal representation. It has had to do with a sitting commissioner.
Yep. But it, so when I, you talked about this, because you had our meeting, we have an attorney. So there's other attorneys. My attorney had nothing to do with that at the time. You, you could use our attorney. And we had this discussion when you, when you came to us during.
The board has actually voted that I, that I.
That you asked.
Add this to my budget simply because we need to, we, we need to have legal represent, representation of our choosing.
The attorneys that sit on the board are asking for an attorney.
Okay. I'm not an attorney.
We only play one.
But you play one on TV.
TV.
And the election night rental, is that something you, for a van, you've used that before, done that before or no?
They had to at the end of last year.
Because the equipment that the state now requires us to, to have is so large. Nobody can fit that in a vehicle.
Won't fit in a truck, pickup truck?
Yeah, but I'd need, I'd need 20 trucks.
No, they.
So we have, yeah, we need, we.
Man either.
Yeah.
Saying.
I think we had.
Trucks in the county. I just, that's why just maintenance, somebody could help with that maybe.
They don't have box trucks. So if it's, what are you going to do if it's raining?
Well, typically it's early November. Sensitive electronic.
And may.
Selection equipment.
Weird. You don't want to buy any of these stuff.
All right. Going, any further questioning?
Yeah, going back to the topic of attorneys, legal services for the election board. So you're presently, your election board members are attorneys. They're licensed. But they're not required to be. This is just something that our county has always done. You don't have to be an attorney to be on the election board.
Right. But that's the way it's always been, which is my favorite saying in the world.
Yeah. And maybe it doesn't need to be that way because it's sometimes it's hard to find election board members that are attorneys that want to do it.
Yeah.
The other thing is I find it problematic with us trying to refer like, or push our attorneys on the election board. Particularly when we're elected officials that sometimes could be up for investigation by the election board. If in any case, we're able to use our pressure over our attorney to then shift the advice that they're giving you. We don't want dual loyalties. You should have your own legal counsel separate from us.
I think that what's going.
From the two attorneys that are sitting there. First of all, I, I don't, I don't care for your comment that somehow we're going to pressure the attorney.
I'm not saying that you are, but someone could.
Okay.
Or they may feel pressured on their own.
Let's go with something more objective.
This, Mr. President.
Mr. Beege?
Extraordinary.
Can I chime in?
I'm asking you to, go for it.
Okay. So my first round is county council attorney. Lynn Speedak was the clerk and she ran the election board. And typically she would ask. That the council fund me, with that ever consulting movie was always a surprise, by the way, on election board matters. So the election board can pull different lawyers from different areas. If that, I think there may be a conflict of interest, if there's any allegation against a council person. But I don't think we've ever had one. It's never been an issue there. But historically, the clerk has used the council attorney on specific matters before the election board. And I did that for probably 10 years.
Agreed. Okay. But now the one thing I heard you say was. Fund the use of the coun, of the council attorney. Is that what I understood?
Well, no, Lynn would just ask that the council give permission to use and I just do it. I just bill it on an hourly basis at the regular county rate. It was pretty simple, actually.
So, but. Where's it billed to?
Yeah, that's where my question's going is who would bill it to?
Commissioner.
I think that goes to general litigation under the commissioners.
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 So, so the county is paying for, for legal representation for you no matter what. The only difference now is that we're enforcing our will upon which attorney is going to represent you. That's the only thing.
We're just asking for a turn, for, for represent, representation of our choosing.
You're asking for two attorneys to hire another attorney. That's what you're really asking.
Because if somebody, if we make a decision and that is appealed, and that has happened. It was the sitting commissioner's attorney who appointed our attorney to us. That was not an option given.
Don't allow the, if it's a council member, don't allow the council attorney. And if it's a commissioner, don't allow the commissioners.
Very easy.
But again, they're just, they like Chris Willoughby. They would just like to have him available and have permission to use him. That's it.
That is ridiculous. I've never heard.
This was a unanimous decision by both Republican and Democrat members of the election.
Correct.
Unanimous. There's two of them.
You make it. There's three of them.
But they agree.
It was unanimous.
Attorney is asking to have the weight taken off of them and have somebody else do it.
They can't represent themselves when there's an appeal. They can't do that.
If it was a commissioner, you go to the council. If it was a council, you go to the commissioner's attorney.
And either way, the commissioners are paying for it.
No, we, we pay.
Go outside of there.
The county council pays for it.
So it's, okay.
They don't pay for money. We do.
Let's adjust legal services. The legal services request from the commissioner's attorney and put it in here.
We're not, but then you're going to have every department come in and ask them for their own line item and legal. And that's the whole purpose was that it was in one spot and you didn't have to do it. And here they already have two attorneys to do it. This is a, it was a unique situation, hopefully. That happened. And if you adopted some rules, you wouldn't have it happen again.
The attorney here just made a statement, in the last 10 years he was there, nothing's ever happened. If something does happen, we can always, we have meetings all the time. We can get an attorney. There's attorneys.
Can I try that again? You're assuming an attorney can give legal advice as a sitting board member. Most malpractice will not cover that. Most attorneys will not do that. I know I will not do that when I'm on a board because I won't have any malpractice insurance. So the legal advice should be coming from an attorney that's not on the board.
For, for a legal opinion, but making a decision, a sitting attorney should have legal knowledge not to make a wrong decision, shouldn't they?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I agree. I, I, but we're talking about advice or opinions.
So. I think, I think this is like a big hypothetical.
And again, if, so, so if nothing happens, this money comes right back to you guys. But if it does, the board, the board has somebody. And that's what they're asking.
Build it and they will come philosophy is not a good philosophy. So we have attorneys that are available. We, one will not represent, you don't, you, you do not represent one at one time. It's either a commissioner or a council person. It's either one or the other. There's vice versa, but, but attorneys take care of it. We don't have to build this big, huge thing here because we like Chris Willoughby. Has nothing to do with it. Chris Willoughby could be gone tomorrow. That's not his conversation.
But what they're saying is, so for, for years and years and years and years around here, there's been no enforcement of any campaign laws. No campaign finance laws.
Good.
And now this board is enforcing.
Good.
So last year, there was an appeal on, on a decision that the board made.
For who? A commissioner or council?
That one was a commissioner.
Then we go to the council attorney. And if it was a councilman, we go to the commissioner's attorney. Works really well.
If you need to go above and beyond that, then you come for funding and we'll do it.
This is why enforcement didn't happen.
This is why it's ridiculous. You don't build it and they will come. Just like the, just like the said with the travel.
Any further discussion?
One other question. So if you come to the council, so in this case you had a commissioner that was in question. So you couldn't go to the commissioner's attorney. To get legal advice from him or legal representation from him. So you go to the council's attorney and you get legal representation from him. And then you proceed to bill the commissioner's legal services budget. What happens if they reject that claim? Will they reject that claim?
Come to the council.
You come to the.
But we can override that.
We, we can. We can. Oh, yes, we can. We have.
We're going to force them to make claims?
We've been asked to pay legal bills in the.
Yes, we have. We paid them. And we paid them.
You certainly have, including this year.
Thank you very much.
You paid a $40,000 bill this year.
Yes, sir.
That sounds like quite a runaround to have to force the election board to go through in order to force the law.
This is not a game. It's not a game.
It's a worst case scenario.
It's not a game. We don't do this all the time. Good.
Good dish.
Then I'm asking for a motion. What are we doing?
Is there one on the floor?
No, we don't have any on the floor.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
There was no mo, are you making a motion?
No.
The election conference, and if, if I miss something, if I'm repeating myself, forgive me. The election conference, $3,500, that wasn't anywhere before. According to our book, so I'm not, this isn't a.
If you look over in your book.
Something that's new. You got to look at the book that we have. Look at the book.
It was put in place in, last year in 2025.
For? Yeah, we put it in place.
Was it chronicled, was that for? You have to remember.
For the actual conference, was it for the meals? So that employee education and training, that was for a conference of some sort.
That, that's so that we can, that was put into place last year. That is so that we can register. I can use the county card and I can get our rooms.
And then, but then there's $7,000 for the conference.
Maybe that was just the registration.
It is just.
Just the registration. That's so that I can.
One is registration. You have a line item for registering and you have a line item for paying for the conference. Why wouldn't they just all be in one? And so that conference is $10,500?
It's an expensive, it's seven people. It's a big one and it's three days.
I figure it's about 750 bucks for 1,000.
The thing is, I, I mean, regardless if it gets approved or not, I think those two need to be, if they're for one item, they need to be.
Put them together.
Would you not agree? I mean. If it's for.
I, I can see.
Never seen a line item for.
I can see travel and I can see, you know, education and training, right? But. I can go with either.
I like the way you're doing it, the way you're just.
Just split it.
I think there should be two of them, but that, that makes more sense because a lot of times, you, you said that. You could introduce them. I like, I like, think that yours, I think it's a lot more sense because you do mention that sometimes you're just taking care of meal or some small cost, right?
Sometimes, yeah.
All right. Anything else? Going once.
Our goal is just to get as close to a true budget as we can so that we're not coming back all the time.
Understood.
The only thing I got an issue with is legal services and I made that clear. So.
You sure? You sure it was clear?
I think I was, I, you like me to start over beginning?
I think there's three of you that were crystal clear. All right. All right, I'm entertaining a motion.
Make a motion to adopt the 2025 budget.
With the legal services?
Legal services went down. It's not the.
No, it didn't.
It's seven, not.
Oh, oh.
Legal services are asking for, look on page two.
It was only 37,000.
Your board members got to go up. That's right. You're right. Your board members have to go up. Is that right?
And election supplies and.
Yeah. Look on page two, Mark.
Okay, I'm looking, hang on.
Last year you guys wanted the election money and I was like, go ahead. I don't need it, but I'm going to need it back.
Well, then you came back and asked for more money.
Sorry.
No, you're not.
So what's your motion?
Am I missing anything if I go with the 2024 budget? I'm asking a question. Look at the numbers. 226, 22.
She's only asking 25.
Right. So fine, that's fine. This one we don't agree with. That's.
But she's going down to seven last year, question seven.
I know, but it.
I think 2024 is going to cut it too much.
Okay.
Yeah, some of these are adjusted to account for the election.
You're right. You're right.
I think you could, I, I think you could do it minus the legal services, but.
Well, also I'm talking about election conference. I don't agree with.
Here, let me, let me give you some Excel numbers real quick. So, uh, what you're, if you're approved to the 2024 numbers. You're going to be at 335, 370.
Okay.
What they're asking for is.
328.
328, 600. But they put it to more discreet accounts. For use. Minus the debate on legal services, it comes down to, it has. More discreet buckets, kind of like we were talking about travel versus educational for the, what the uses are for election night, election prep, running of halls. Move equipment, what have you.
It's also voting, so there's savings with the way you've restructured the voting centers.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. Compared to 2024, it's a savings. Yeah, compared to 2024, it's savings.
You want me to wing it or you?
Go ahead, Duke.
I'm, my motion is, motion to approve minus the legal services in the, um, the election conference was in there last year, but.
But for 7,000, not for 20.
It's 7,000, but that's.
That's the same amount of what's requested now.
So I'm just going to make the motion to, minus the legal services.
Minus 3120.
So motion by Mr. Novak. Do I have a second?
Second for.
Second by Mr. Yagelski to approve all the twos and threes.
Except 3120.
Except 3120 legal services for $5,000. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
Nay.
I'm doing it. Just I'm waiting. All right.
Okay. And just a quick thing with voters, because I did watch that. I don't pay for their summer conference.
That's.
Just the one in the, in the winter.
And that's exactly what they answered.
But you would like to?
Is that the commissioner?
What?
Like to?
No, I would not like to. Would you like to?
When she, when she was talking about.
Yes.
I get it. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, let's thank Kerry for coming in our day off.
Justin.
Right?
Mike.
Thank you.
We did the election board already too.
Yeah, we did. That was the election board.
Uh, Weets and Measures and the survey are both here.
All right.
Two extensions here.
All right, so coming up on three voters done. Pioneer Cemeteries until 3:15, we can get probably two of them in, at least.
You want one?
Well, you could take Pioneer Cemetery and add everybody else after.
Is Pioneer here?
Yeah, she's there.
Well, let's, come on up.
Motion to approve is presented. It's the same thing. We're not going to cut it.
All right, you got a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Novak, second by Mr. Kessler. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Thanks for coming by.
That's all there is to it.
If you'd like to make a statement, if you'd like to make a statement.
I have all this paperwork.
Would you like us to scrutinize it more or?
Did you watch the last?
Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Did you watch the last one?
All right. Let's go, Wait to Measure should be pretty quick.
Oh, then we have.
Insert.
Wait to Measure. Then we have a change, we have a little change in that one. What number is that?
We've added a bunch of people.
No, no.
What number?
I don't have.
What number?
I'm looking for it.
You need off the other sheet.
Thank you.
138.
Is it in there?
Yes.
He had one of those sheets for.
Take too long either.
Oh, Extension's easy too.
Justin, did you, did you guys work it out when we talked about earlier in the year with his account?
Yep.
Giving the part-time, giving the part-time an increase?
Yes, he is. Even though we didn't get a chance to talk.
Thank you.
Aye.
Thank you. Dakota Ullrich, Wait to Measures.
How are you, Dakota?
I'm doing well.
All right. So let's talk the easy stuff first, twos and threes.
Twos and threes, I didn't have any changes except for the dues account. It was originally in my training and conferences and it's a national conference due. And so I've learned that it's probably more appropriate to pay that out of the dues account, so I moved that money.
Okay. Any questions from the board? All right, uh, let's talk 100s real quick. So you, you've got roughly a $10,000 bump in elected official, but you're dropping your extra hire part-time from 12 to 3. Want to talk about that a little bit?
Well, it hasn't been filled since, I believe, September of 2023. And right now, I don't foresee me hiring it. I, I would say ideally, I would see that position more as a maybe seasonal. Ideal candidate would probably be someone that would be a high school senior getting ready to go to college. Is okay, make it 20 hours a week, come home for fall break and want to work a few hours. Home for winter break and want to work a few hours. So probably more a seasonal position than a full part-time.
Any questions?
Motion to approve the two and threes.
I got a question and, and the, what if you say you don't need a part-time? What if something happens with you're not able to go? Say you get sick or something like that, what's gonna, what's gonna take place?
Well, I, and then I would say that the state would hopefully assist in those endeavors. Because I imagine there's many, many of the inspectors across the state are aging. And those instances have happened. I imagine the state would assist in that as well. Because any part-time to actually certify the device, it would have to be, go to, down to the state and have all the qualifications with the state as well. So I, I wouldn't see a seasonal employee or a part-time really taking those actions.
Your part-time person wouldn't be certified to, to step in and do it on your behalf anyways.
Right, I would still have to be the one to sign the documents and witness.
So just don't get hospitalized.
Motion to approve the twos and threes.
Motion approved by Mr. Novak. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Pressle and Mr. Kessler. Further discussion?
Not on the twos and threes, but Dakota did share with us some comparison. Thank you. Dakota did share with us the numbers of some of the other counties of similar size in the state, just so that we're kind of aware of where we're at, which is behind.
With that, would be interesting to know, some of these, you know, larger or more populous counties, you know, like you look at Elkhart being a pretty busy county and they have one full-time person. What are they doing in the event of vacations and whatnot or, or illness, that sort of thing, right? If they've got any history, it'd be great for that to be able to share. So it's something more tangible for us to answer to. You know how you're saying that hopefully the state would. Is there something that has actually happened before to, to cover that?
But I like the predecessor he had, he had, I asked that question a couple of years back when he was on it. He says, he goes, you know, I'm on vacation, I'm on vacation. I go, it's my, my schedule for the years, whatever I do. If I'm more busier in January, you know, less busier in February. So he, he never had a problem with that, so I'm just answering what he might.
Scales just don't get checked that week.
Yeah, exactly. And that's why I kind of misspoke when I said to that, when I mentioned that, but more along the lines of, let's say, short-term disability type of situation, right? Let's say surgery or whatnot. What is, what has happened in the past?
What is protocol?
What's protocol?
I, I would say would, in relation to that, in a short time, if it was a short illness or like that, I would just move whatever I had on the schedule to later in the year. And then if there was ever unforeseen circumstance, when that was for a longer extended period, I would obviously pick that up at the beginning of the next year to get caught up and then move forward from there.
Is there any kind of rule that if you miss this gas station for some reason this year, that it's, you know, that's a big fine or penalty or, or is it like you did, you got them the first year, next year?
So currently, we don't have any fines or anything in place in LaPorte County.
I'm talking about, I'm talking about for the state coming down on you.
So for the state, only thing the, the, the fuel stations do, they pay a, a fee to the state for fuel testing. And that's for like the octane and stuff like that. So the sticker that you see on the pump, so right now I'm putting a 2025 sticker on there. That actually goes all the way until December of 2026.
Okay.
I have that entire year of 2026 to re-inspect that and certify it for 2026.
So that gallon of gas you inspect all the time, where does that go?
There, there are some counties that do have a, uh, registration for the devices. I, I don't think I'm in a position to do that just yet, but it could be thoughts in the future.
Okay, thank you.
So it's a little different than, than I'm used to.
You get a week.
Like right now.
Yeah. All right, so I hear motion is second for twos and threes. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Nay. Thank you.
Thank you. And thanks for the extra information.
Thank you.
All right, let's go to Extension. What number is this?
133.
Right.
Mic's on.
How'd the fair go?
It was great.
You glad it's over?
Yes.
Yes.
You recovered? Well, Brett was sleeping at lunchtime, so.
I was not sleeping. I was resting my eyes.
Checking his eyelids for cracks. That's what my dad always said.
There you go. All right, step increases for a couple of positions. And then Extension Purdue, so Extension Educators. So that's a bump.
Contractual Services is always a bump every year.
Okay, that's coming from.
That comes from Purdue.
Okay.
So there's a question on that 100 account. I know you always said this before a thousand times. We don't honor Purdue's contract with you. We, if we gave a raise, it should be X, but they would have to, they would have to pay care of their own raises.
The contractual services.
Right, so contractual services. So if the commissioner signed that, they're going to pay that.
Correct.
So I understand exactly what you're saying, but we need to have that conversation with the commissioners.
Yes.
Okay.
So when they turn in a contract, it says you will pay this amount.
And that's changed over the last couple of years or not?
No, it's always been contractual services, whatever commissioners.
For the, for the educators.
The process hasn't changed.
No.
The dollar amount.
The dollar amount increases every year.
Every year for the last 23 years, statements have been going out. We voted it that way, that they do not get an increase. We don't, we only pay up to our raises.
I'm not arguing that. I'm not arguing that at all.
So you're saying all those years Purdue paid?
Because what I'm, is what I'm saying is, is there, since I've been their liaison, they have a contract that is signed by the commissioners, that I would assume if it's signed by the commissioners, going to supersede what we did. There's going to be, there might be a difference in the money there then. I'm just telling you. When they, when they put that in here.
I remember.
That's the amount that's going to be on the contract that the, they're asking the commissioners.
I remember what the commissioners want to do that.
That's what I'm saying. We need to.
Does that, that's been going up for.
Um, and then, well, do you want to do, twos and threes haven't changed, other than the contractual services.
Yep, the other ones are step increases.
Step increases. And then we hired a new secretary, so that will also drop. That 10, 7, whatever, 10117 will change by like 5,000 less.
So before we approve those, the number will be updated, right?
Yep.
Yes. And then in, in the 144?
This is part of the.
That's not part.
Two and three?
That's part of twos and threes. So if that's contingent, I'd.
So for the, for the 30292, whoever makes the motion, I'd recommend that we hold off on that one because it's contingent on the commissioners.
Motion to approve everything in the twos and threes except for the contingent on, because it's contingent on the commissioner's approval, the, uh,
The rate.
Purdue Extension contract.
It is on.
I have it on.
He's just whispering.
I'm a quiet person.
You weren't, you were sounding like Mark earlier.
Is that, yeah. All right. Does everybody understand that?
Yep, yes.
All right, so a motion by Mr. Novak for all the twos and threes minus 30292. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kessler. Any further discussion? With that, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
He nays on everything, so don't take it personally.
Almost.
I'm not offended. I don't get offended by very much, so.
Thank you. All right, so you'll get another 144 to the.
Thank you, ladies.
Yes, Kathy will get you an updated one.
I'll send one over.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, let's go to 911.
Surveyor's also here.
I see that. So we'll get them both and then we'll be 911.
911?
I don't remember.
Uh, 911 is. 177?
What is it? 177. Good afternoon.
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 So it looks like you've had some changes in the communications officers and, and some steps to the assistant shift supervisor?
Yes.
Yeah.
Uniforms. That's a new one.
It's not a new account. It's, that was changed last year. It used to come out of other services and Rhonda made us change it to the uniform account.
Okay.
Matt has a cold. He doesn't feel good.
We don't use the term.
Did you get the fair cold?
All right, Rhonda made us.
Previous, previous office had us change a few of our.
Asked us to move that to a different.
Made us.
Sorry.
He's training to run for office, man.
Right, that's not going to happen.
Smart.
All right, um, other supplies, I see you, you got 1,300 expended on a $10,000 limit or $10,000 adopted budget.
1,300 for today?
Yeah, that's probably through May.
When I, when I checked up to today, I think we're at, I think we got 4,600 left in there.
Okay.
That was another one that was changed by the previous. We used to call that utilities and now it's other services. So that's, uh, water, stuff like that all come out of there.
Say what? Your water is now under other supplies? Are you talking bottled water? Are you talking?
Our drinking water comes out of there. So pretty much anything that we can't pay out of user fees, we pay out of that account.
All right, that makes more sense. All right, any other questions?
Oh, yeah, other supplies just, we should have a definition of other supplies so we.
It's usually going to be.
There's a different, there's a different definition on every page.
There is. Any and all the above.
That's what we have. We have office supplies and other supplies. That's the only two we have.
I'm sorry, do maintenance contracts include, I'm looking at your capital asset plan here. Does that cover the firewall expense and?
Motorola.
No, so that's our Motorola and Pulse Point yearly cost. Most of the capital improvement plan stuff is all comes out of our computer budget. And that's what I, I wasn't sure what all you wanted on the, most of that stuff's already budgeted out of our user fee stuff. Because we can pay for all of our electronic devices, stuff like that out of that. So like next year, when we have to start replacing CAD computers, those all come out of our computer fund.
What does the, what does the state have a say about? I know that some other, I think it was at Porter County, just changed their, their whole new system or whatever it was. What, have they talked about some, any increases to try to supplement any of that?
No, no, they want to, the, the state's answer is they approved another lit tax for 911 services only.
Oh, it's going to, it's going to fall on our state governors?
No, you guys would have to put it in.
No, but it's like our legislators proposed.
Yeah, that was, so we asked for an increase in user fees and they, they wouldn't.
And some of the problem when Barb and I and Matt met with some other people, other places in downstate, the.
The director.
Director. A lot of other 911 agencies are flush with, they have plenty of money. So us saying we're short, they're not going to, they're not going to change the fees. I'm just telling, is that?
That's exactly what they're doing. They said that the two options we had are another tax That's exactly what they told us, they said that the two options we had are another tax or start to, so we can charge Michigan City, we can charge LaPorte City, user fee to use what we provide, and that's how other
Municipalities do it.
Centers throughout the state are funding themselves.
So that new, was it Lake or Port?
Porter County just got a new CAD system.
That was Porter then, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
So do they charge individuals groups in?
I don't know, I can find out and let you know.
Would you please?
Yep.
Thank you.
Why is it that they charge the other cities, like a service fee?
Michigan City used to have their own dispatchers and then they were by the county.
Yeah, but you guys are funded by general property taxes which are paid for by people in Michigan City and the port, and you're paid by user fees which is paid by everybody that, or comes from everybody that has a cellphone or phone of some sort, right?
Then they absorb, they absorb Long Beach recently, which was probably the most recent.
Now, one of the other reasons too, like Michigan City, during the day they have an officer that sits at the desk and answers all their administrative phone calls, stuff like that, at night, to save and put an extra officer out on the street, they transfer their phone to us, so we answer Michigan City's administrative lines all night, as well as Long Beach's if they're out of the office, so I think it's some of that, but I have, there's some different stuff that we got that I'll forward to you to kind of read on it, but that's.
Sure, yeah.
We begged for.
Like reading material.
Everybody has and they always tell us no.
Listen, one of the things they, I just used, one of the municipalities, Westville, they have a day, 3 to 11, police officer, they have none at night, so then the sheriff's department has to take over that at nighttime or something, there is no, but Michigan City has its own central policing agency.
Michigan City's actually a backup location also.
Yeah.
Yes.
So that, there's a difference of that, not just because of taxing units, because they actually have more services, they offer more services like those, like LaPorte City or Michigan City does compared to Westville or Long Beach or so on and so forth, or even compared to our smaller groups that are out there, so the basic services available, I meant, if we can't honor it, the sheriff's responsibility is to cover the whole county unfortunately, but is that, that's gonna happen? So we offer basic services, but the rest of it goes on the above that.
Gotcha. Motion to approve 177.
Motion to approve 177, twos and threes?
Twos and threes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kessler, second by Mr. Novak, any further discussion? With that, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Me.
Then the next one's your.
734.
User fee account?
Yeah, that's our user fees.
Less than before?
But I see overtime they took 50,000 off of.
We put some of that in.
What's that?
Lit.
Nevermind, there it is, nevermind. So you're at 100 and nearly 135,000, at least through May, for overtime, I assume you're gonna be coming back to see us?
We just did.
That's right, you did just.
Yeah, we just stopped for another 75,000.
If you want us to come back again.
No, it's right, because I think we split it anticipating that you'll be back again.
And I ran the numbers and I think with openings, we should get through the year with what you gave us.
What?
But I'm not gonna say that for sure, because if I have to come back, I, but.
I think we're all a bunch of cranky old, well, most of us are cranky old.
Nobody argued, we said it, we just put it forward, I think the only thing that we talked about and Mr. Rosenbaum said is we just need to put a line item in lit that we can, so we can pay overtime out of that, because currently all our overtime comes out of user fees.
That's what we approved it out of, wasn't it?
Right, but we don't have, so we don't have an overtime.
Line item.
Line in lit for us.
When we get to that, the lit budget, we'll have to look at that.
Also, at the council meeting, Justin asked if we did a five-year on how much we actually spend in overtime, and in the last, in five years, the average is 303,940 dollars in overtime. In the last five years.
That's why I always say watch what you ask for.
We also haven't been fully staffed in six years.
That's true.
So the question.
Overtime's not taxed anymore.
President said overtime.
President said overtime's not taxed anymore. A lot of asterisks in fine print.
Some fine print to it. Alright. See, there's a bump for elected official department head.
I'm not elected.
That, no, but that's the account, right, is elected official slash department head.
Yes.
So that was our request, Earl's last thing is 5,000 last year and 5,000 this year.
Okay. Now, is it a typo that, that you're bumped up about 27 dollars for your position? Looks like it's.
I wish it was a lot more than that.
Yeah, it looks like it's numbers reversed.
It's like another.
There is something that we need to, whether it's the review committee, but correct me wrong, but Matt is still getting steps?
Matt is still in the step program.
So Matt's?
He's the only assistant director in, still in steps, and.
Keeps catching Bart.
I would, I would like to have him out of the steps program, but in steps, when he's here 27 years, he would make, I think it's 74. I think it would be fair for him to, if we get him out of the step program and eliminate that out of the steps, you know, that would no longer be, and then raise his salary, I say to 74.
When you say step program, it sounds like he's recovering from something.
Well, he is. He's sick today.
Recovering from the fair right now.
Alright.
He's the only department assistant director that is in steps and that needs to come out.
Yeah, he's, isn't he, he's not a person assistance? 85, okay.
Is the phone lines, $300,000 for phones, have we made any progress on getting rid of those T1 lines that were expensive, they were talking about doing?
So all the radio T1 lines are gone?
Okay.
The, the T1s that are left, and I have Frontier currently trying to mark them for us, because they're generic numbers, so nobody knows exactly what it is, Darlene's been kind of helping me with that, but the T1s that are left may be like a bulk phone number out at JDC where they have six or seven lines coming in, we pay for a lot of the phones throughout the whole county, alarm lines.
Working on trying to.
But I think, I paid the phone bill this morning and when I started, I think it was about 9,000 a month and it's 22,000 now to Frontier that we pay for one, and we get, I think, four Frontier bills and three AT&amp;T bills a month.
Ouch.
Yeah.
Now, looking at what you've got expended so far, looks like you're probably gonna have to come back to us or do some transfers by the end of the year.
So the big hit out of that is we pay our CAD out of there, which we probably shouldn't, we should have a separate line for that, our CAD's roughly, our yearly maintenance on that, I think 67,000 goes up about 5% every year, we've paid that out of there historically, so that's why it takes such a big hit. We haven't had to ask for more out of that yet, but if this bill keeps going up, we're gonna have to start coming back.
Is it more appropriate to adjust your computer maintenance line item?
I think it'd be, I think it'd almost be better if we had a separate line item just for the CAD maintenance, since it's such a high one.
And how's your, how's your staffing right now?
We're down.
Five?
Five, it, we just hired one, a couple, he's been there three weeks now, he just moved to the floor, and we have one starting the first of August.
How long's the training process?
Six months at minimum.
Six months minimum and probation for a year. Now, they, they spend several weeks in the office with Nikki, our training officer, and then they move to the floor with a trainer, and then they, they clear each council, and before, you know, they have to clear all the councils before they can be left on their own, so it takes a good six.
Porter County's a year.
And are you getting, are you getting applicants, more applicants, I'm saying that cautiously, but it's a tough process, I mean, not everybody qualifies, I know.
So the, out of, so our biggest one, we did a big one, HR did some advertising, we did some big Facebook stuff, really pushed for it, I think we got 32 applicants of that.
Five passed the test.
Five passed the test and we interviewed one.
Couple of them couldn't pass the background test, you know, there was, there was some issues, and we did interview one person.
We hired one out of the 32.
Alright, motion to approve
the 11222 account as presented.
Twos and threes? Alright.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Novak, second by Mr. Kessler.
Discussion, quick question then more complicated question, first one, payroll withholding, I noticed for the three categories, it dropped, I know that's 100s, but what's the background there?
Younger people there or?
So the payroll itself has went down?
Is it?
That's what you're asking?
Yeah.
Medicare is down.
Yeah, so I, I got the formula for Mary and that's the numbers I ran and that's what she told me was appropriate.
Okay, and then the other one was your user fees, are they paid in like monthly installments?
32,000 a month, and then there's a.
And it's consistent.
Then at the end of the year, they do a
Catch up.
A catch up more or less, and we get one extra check a year.
I ask because we started the year, based on the cash balance numbers here, with 419,000 in Fund 1222, and we're currently at 310,000. In the first six months of the year, we spent $100,000 more than what we brought in in revenue, are we in a sustainable situation with that? Perhaps we ought to be thinking about how we structure this fund so that we don't run it completely out of money and then find ourselves in a future year.
It's been an ongoing.
I've brought that up, I've brought that up every year that we're.
This is not something new.
We used to have a surplus of almost 1.5, and we've slowly dwindled this down, the biggest hit was when we got the last raises, I mean, that, that was a big takeout of that in overtime and everything else, but every year we get closer to running out of funding, I think that's why we're doing the Motorola bill and some of those other ones out of other accounts, because if we did that, we would be out.
That's why they have a lit public safety.
So part of it being the fact that they're constantly, you know, perpetually five down, right, as it seems like on a regular basis, and that's where overtime is just constantly killing them, is this the fact of what's it gonna take to have a full team?
Yeah, and that brings me to overtime, so you said the five-year rolling average was?
Three.
303,000 dollars?
For overtime.
For overtime, and we're currently budgeting 150.
They're also short people, so they got money in their 100s that they're using.
So of that 300,000, I'd say last year.
If we budget 300,000, usually cut it to 150 and then we have to come back, and, you know, it depends on how many vacancies we have as if we can fund it, last year we had 338,000 in overtime.
Okay.
Is what we spent out.
So when you're fully staffed, then it doesn't?
If we were fully staffed, we would not have these big numbers in overtime.
I think the last time we were fully staffed, when I looked, we were around 100,000 with overtime.
Okay.
In 2020, we spent 175,760 in 2020.
Do we have trouble retaining dispatchers, is there a lot of turnover?
Yes.
Is some of that because of the overtime?
One of the reasons, when Matt and I first took over, a new hire was 39,000 dollars, basically, 39 plus. We, with the help of the council, got it raised to 50,000, 057 is our starting, with 51,000 our, after one year, which was, everybody was very pleased because it had been so low, right now, we always try and keep up with Porter County and we always feel, fall behind, but Porter County is now starting at 56,000 is their starting. We lose them to Porter County or other counties because, I will say because of money.
Overtime does definitely take a toll with the burnout factor.
Yeah, because right now.
The national average for a dispatcher is five years. This is a nationwide issue, this isn't LaPorte County, I mean, it's, if you go talk to Lake County, you go talk to any of them, they're, they're, they're having the same issues we are, and nobody's been able to figure out what it is to solve it, they're trying, but we sat through conferences and class after class trying to do different things and it's just, it's just not a good, good spot right now for it.
When we do interviews, we ask, you know, can you work all three shifts? No. I can only work afternoons, or I can only work days, I won't work midnights, well, we don't close, you know, there's, they don't have an option, but those are some of the answers we get back.
And then you tell somebody they're not gonna have a weekend off for every six weeks, I mean, roughly with a four and two rotation, so that's, that's a lot with them too.
Alright, Mr. Yagelski.
Two questions, so you're in eight hours or 12 hours?
Eight.
Eight, so on eight different, there's different shifts, I've worked at all my years, there's some where you get a week off, if you do, it depends how many days you can work in a row, so is there any alternatives that people, if you talk to the group, would like, because I meant, there's like seven different schedules out there, you know, two on, three on, three off, two on, you know, this, I could order 776 or whatever you want to pick, is any of those alternatives to asking the group a better process, would I mind working maybe two extra more days and then I get?
Extra four off?
Yes.
Yes, so we have, the biggest, I think the biggest challenge here would be getting us to switch to 12-hour shifts, and then.
Switch to what, I'm sorry?
Switch to 12-hour shifts.
If you look at alternative schedules, you, I, you want to talk to you about later, but.
Yeah.
The mills, we did all that stuff, we ended up going to 12s, but that's another conversation, because that's a burnout more of a situation with yours, they need breaks more than that, but there is alternative schedules that we can look at.
I don't think we have enough people to do.
No, it's the same amount of people, you don't change people, you don't change numbers, you just work a different schedule, so I, I work, instead of working just, what do you work now, max days a week?
Four and two.
So if you, instead of, I would work six days and then I get five days off.
So I recently set up a schedule like this as a recommendation to JSC when we were talking about it, I can pass that along to you if that's what you've got in mind and if you want to.
Oh, you'd pass it on yourself, I don't, I just thought of, if you might want to check alternative schedules, that's all, I know the police have it, for example, before they went to 12s, they had alternatives like that, and, well, anyway.
Porter County, they do a 12 and 12.
Okay, that was the first question, the second question is, you said about municipalities maybe paying their, call it their fair share, whatever, was there a formula that you know of that, or just, or you would take the number and divide it by everybody, municipalities and go by pop, how would you, how would that be, if we, if we have to at some point say, okay, we might have to impose it, how would we impose it?
I will get that information to you.
Okay, thank you.
I don't, I don't have a good answer on that.
You were just suggesting, I'm not suggesting, you were just bringing up what other people do, but, if you have another copy, just send it directly to them.
Just send it right now.
Yeah, if you send it to me, I'll send it to everyone.
That was it, thank you, sir.
Any further discussion? With that, I'll entertain a motion.
You had a motion by Randy and a second by Brett.
It's a long discussion.
We're just waiting on you.
Alright, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. 6-1?
Yep.
Thank you.
Wish I had some people, it's up to you.
No, we can add people.
Was it 6-1 or?
6-1.
6-1, that's all I've got on all day.
Just keeping track.
I know, she's good. Did you go to baseball games and have, keep a scorebook too?
Yeah.
Okay.
I did.
Alright, alright, public safety lit. Comms officer's the same. Maintenance contract's up 5,000 and that's your, was that the Motorola or was that the?
That's Vesta.
That's Vesta.
Which is our Motorola phones.
No, it's up more than 5,000.
We adopted 90.
Look at the bottom. No, 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 you're right, you're right, you're right.
I have 5,000.
Let the record show that Mr. Novak.
He's gonna go take a nap. I'll be back in 20.
Alright.
Motion to approve.
Second.
734.
Motion to approve.
117.
The 3,000 account, 300 account, that's our 100s.
Yeah.
Alright, motion by Mr. Novak, second by Mr. Kessler, any more discussion, the last half hour, thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Me.
Let the record show they have a capital assessment plan attached.
And the firewall and server in there are already factored into other items in your guys' budget, right?
What did you, I'm sorry.
The hardware for the firewall, that's already factored in somewhere else, or is that something you intend to come back for? Server's a future year, but firewall.
The server will have money for all the computer stuff. The big ones, the, our radio console's around 3.4 million.
Thank you, I try.
Shoot, that is big, but that's 2028.
Yeah, that's.
You got a plan. Yeah.
That's a big one that we're gonna, I want to make sure.
This is why we have the plan.
Yeah.
So we can be depressed in advance.
Yeah. So the firewall though, normally we split that with the sheriff, so we come back and ask, that is a joint thing last time.
Okay.
When we did that, because we host it, but we both use the same one. Well, they have one, but we use the same contract.
Okay.
I guess their network, I guess their network kind of piggybacks off ours, I'd say.
Is this a non-negotiable item that we're absolutely going to have to do next year, or is it something that's gonna be up for discussion?
When it, yeah.
Like the other one that we have is expiring or it's end of life or something like that?
End of life, yeah.
Okay, so should it be something that we budget if we know we're going to do it?
How much is it?
76 is what you have in here.
So, yeah. And those are rough numbers that I, I mean, a lot of the stuff that we tried to put in here, I mean, they need engineers and everybody else to come in and look at this stuff, just to give you a rough number.
Is there anything with the council with the 800 at the end of life, you guys don't have to?
2020.
The age of make.
Affordables?
We don't have.
You're not stuck with any?
We've been buying a couple a year, just for the ones that we have in the center, but everybody else is responsible for their own.
We've been talking to sheriff and EMS. I wasn't sure if there's any updates with the council or?
So the, we, that's the 80. So the, we, that's the 80,000, 86,000 a year is that, updates for that stuff. But I've been, at the end of the year, if we have a little leftover, trying to replace our portables a couple at a time. But we only have eight.
I think we need to take all those capital plans and then.
Thinking in a separate workshop.
Yeah, man.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Anything else for us?
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in early.
Thank you.
Better, Matt?
Yeah.
Yeah.
They flew, the fair flew. Get rid of that.
I bet he feels better already.
I'm sure. All right, since we're on time. Let's go to Superior 4. That looks to be an easy one, and then we'll go on to the surveyor.
Same as last year?
Exactly the same as last year.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve twos and threes. Twos and threes, sir?
Yes, sir.
Do I have a second?
I'll second with discussion on psychological services. Is that a sufficient number for you? At 3,000?
No.
What do you think it should be?
30,000.
Don't make recommendations like that.
They spent 4650 last year.
4650?
4650. That's what it shows.
Sorry.
In 2024. Yeah.
2024. He spent 2675 this year.
Already.
Could have been more than that. Does it, would that include if we added more money to that, if they came back? Mike?
We came back twice last year.
Would that include if they came back in total, a total of everything? So they were approved three.
Didn't notice the update in the expense is different.
I know what it says. I just wanted to make sure.
Yes, sir.
I, I would offer up a friendly amendment. If, if we know that we're spending more than 3,000 in psychological services, I don't see any reason to make the judge come and sit for two hours at our meeting to ask for 2,000 bucks to do something he's constitutionally required to do.
Six?
6,000?
I would just go with five.
Five or six. It's trending up, so.
Come back for your six.
If, if he has to.
We spent 10 last year.
10 last year.
Need it this year.
No, definitely not.
If it came out of.
If it came out of another fund.
Were recorded.
Not the numbers you ordered.
Like Riverboat, they were not recorded here. They were recorded in Riverboat.
But aren't yours, yours in?
But that's what happened.
Between you and Greta.
Correct, but we started with three. We added from our budget an additional two. So that's five. We got an additional appropriation in August of five. And that took us through the end of the year, so that's 10.
There's a guy that's got a spreadsheet. He opens it up.
Yeah, that's, that's nifty.
That's pretty impressive.
Someone get him a gold star.
Let me.
Hey, friendly. I say 10, then. That's what it's been in the past.
It's probably of an office supplies.
No, there's an other supply.
It's an others, it's an other supplies.
All right. What was your number?
10. If that's what we spent last year, then, then that's what we should start at, at least.
I'm reluctant to go that high, but.
Do you want to go something lower?
What's the difference, folks?
Around a number, 75.
75. I, I mean, it's a three. I'd go five right now, and then they could.
75.
We knew we were more than five.
Spent less 10 years, 10 last year.
They had a bad year, though.
Was it a bad year?
Well, I will, I will tell you that the cost of psychological evaluations from all of our providers have gone up. They used to be
Your number?
600 to 750. Now they're right around 1,000, so.
Oh, 7500, and I'm coming back. Should have stayed in school.
It's not too late to go back.
I'll get you the admission paperwork. I, I think 10 is the way to go. I mean, if you, if that's what you spent before, it's not getting any cheaper. It, it feels wasteful to make you sit through a whole meeting to ask for something that you have to do.
And if there are any change, then?
Yeah, yeah. I would make a motion to amend to, to make it 10.
I'll second it.
All right. So first, we gotta.
Hold on the amendment.
Go to the amendment.
I'll just withdraw my motion, and you can just do one.
All right. So if you're withdrawing the motion, you're making the amendment for 10. You got a second? So motion by Mr. Keel, second by Mr. Mullenhour, modifying 30088 from $3,000 to $10,000. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
It's a second, eh?
Randy Novak.
Randy, my mark. All right.
It's writing down Novak and you, Kelsey.
All right. I think you're set, sir. Thank you.
That's it.
That's it.
All right, great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Mr. Surveyor, if you will, please.
100% increase. He's happy. Where's that?
108?
No, 106.
106, thank you.
Yeah, we don't want to do the prosecutor again.
No.
Again?
Again. All right, so 106, then 136.
Are we looking, is there a meeting here tonight? Is there a meeting here tonight?
I am not aware of one.
We can lock. It's okay, we can leave the books.
Yeah, we can lock in the books.
All right.
There might be BZA.
So, all right, first thing.
Plan Commission this month.
Looking at, uh,
This month?
Elected official slash department head. I'm guessing that the 40,203 should really be a.
Just, it's just a rounding.
Plan Commission?
I'm sorry. There's a $1 difference. It's just a rounding.
Oh, yeah. Man, Commissioner BZA. That was a correction on the sheet that I saw. It had been submitted, including change. It was a smaller than a dollar amount. Apparently, in one case, they just dropped off the dollar, the pennies, and in the other case, they.
Round it up.
Round it up.
Okay. All right, office supplies, up.
Just for inflation, anticipating inflation. Um, one note, the tab has 106 and 136. Um, in the past year, the two have been.
You should have two separate sheets for two separate budgets.
Here's a surveyor corner perpetuation after.
Okay.
So you have two, you have three sheets total that are in the book.
Yeah.
First three.
Okay, um, repairs to equipment. Looks like you're, it had 36, $36 spent up through.
Right, we have fairly old equipment. Uh, part of the services that the department does involves using jackhammers, using drills out on a roadway. And they're not brand new. They're, they've been in use for quite a while. So we're anticipating, uh, some breakage there, maintaining them. Uh, our vehicles also, since vehicles have come up quite often, we have a 2006 and a 2008 pickup truck, so.
So did you submit the capital, capital plan at all?
Back page.
That is.
Send that with you? I didn't put my binder.
How's you having your truck?
Um, I don't know the mileage on the trucks. They're all over 100,000, probably 150,000. I, I haven't actually seen the vehicles myself, so I don't know what's.
This corner.
But they are.
You haven't seen the vehicles yourself?
Then, I haven't driven them myself. I've seen them in a parking lot, but I have not, they're used by the staff.
For six months.
Well, they're used by the staff, exclusively by the staff. I don't.
The, um, the repair and equipment, why would that not come out of the, uh, corner perpetuation fund that the actual tools come out of? Couldn't that? I mean, that's where.
Well, hang on a second, Randy. I don't want to be sarcastic. I don't know what he comes up, but hang on, I don't know what comes with the trucks. I use jackhammers all the time. Jackhammers don't go bad. You put oil in a jackhammer, it's going to last you 100 friggin' years. How long does it take for? So we don't even know how much equipment we're talking about. They lasted longer than they were here. No, but how come all of a sudden we need all that? That's whatever. You accept it, I don't.
But, no, my, my thing is, is that the repairs, and especially if it's a jackhammer equipment, equipment comes out of the perpetuation fund.
Yes.
That's what, they always come to us at the beginning of the year and say, hey, we need
30, 40,000 dollars to cover shovels, tools.
And right now, there's a jackhammer.
And there's also office equipment that, uh.
You said, you said the office equipment going up by.
You're not going to buy a jackhammer out of office.
No, no, of course not. Yeah.
All right. I have that, I, you never know. We've had other things come out of office supplies, David.
All right, let's talk the elephant in the room. Uh, $30,000 for a registered surveyor.
Uh, that's to bring someone in to do the work that requires a registered surveyor. I myself am not a registered surveyor. And the state requires that the documents we produce be reviewed and approved by a registered surveyor. Uh, the amount that we would charge has not yet been negotiated. Um, I, I tried to bring them in as a part-time, something as a continuing individual, and they're reluctant to do that. Uh, they just want to come in. I'm, I'm sorry?
Why? And the person who had your job like you before, that was Mr. Preszulinski, and he just brought in the people, is he?
No, no, he was a registered surveyor.
No, he wasn't. Mr. Preszulinski was not a.
I'm sorry?
Mr. Preszulinski was not a registered.
He's not the previous. You kind of alluded to your previous. The previous person that wasn't a surveyor.
Was Preszulinski.
Correct.
He just brought people in. He ever had a problem bringing anybody in through his, to his job? So I don't understand. Is there a problem because you're not paying them or what?
No, no, it's, I haven't brought anyone in yet. The, the records are being accumulated, and we'll have a packet of information that he will review and approve. You know, preferably in one, one sitting, uh, maybe two or three sittings. But, but basically, he did not want to come in as a, uh, part-time temporary employee. Because he has a private practice and wanted to focus in on that, but he's willing to come in on a, a job basis.
You're talking about one, I mean, when Mr. Preszulinski said he had four people, so he would just, you know, if you're not available, get B. B's not available, get C. You're not required to get one person.
Yeah, there's, there's several of them out there. They're all registered across county. Absolutely. I'd start with John and Zach Saylor.
Yeah.
Out of Fish Lake.
He was one of them. He did also.
Okay, sure.
So you're not required to do that. You're just required to get a surveyor.
Okay.
So you, you pick a fee that you're going to, that you're going to charge, all surveyors want to charge, whatever that fee is. I mean, we can't. You could pretty much canvas them yourself.
Sure.
What's the going rate for a surveyor?
Now, is there?
Sorry, if you were doing your house or whatever.
Yeah, for sure. Now, the concern I have is you're talking about this documents accumulating. Is there a certain time that we have to have these actually stamped off as approved and filed?
Uh, we need to have, uh, 5% of the markers approved, um, every year. So that basically our season is during the warm months. We accumulate the documents, and at the end of those months, for example, last year, they had 300 that had accumulated, which is more than the 5%, that's close to 10, over 10%. Uh, which I needed to throttle that back because we have to do a certain number every year. And if we do 10% this year, that means 20 years from now, they'll have to have a, a larger number of survey markers, uh, reviewed and.
Regardless, with the fact that we're approving $30,000 right now, will it be a problem that these doc, that these markers that are checking right now are not approved until 2026?
Oh, no, I, I, they'll get done right at the end of the season. Uh, and that's just a, a number that I inserted because I didn't have an amount, so I don't plan on spending $30,000. I just put it in there as a budgetary amount, so that.
I guess I'm looking more for making sure that you don't necessarily should, that the fact that you don't need to come to us now and ask for a certain amount of money in order to get caught up on documents you already have sitting on, in the office that need to get filed by a certain date, otherwise they expire. That's what I'm concerned about.
And the department is different. Actually, the, the function that the department did last year is different now. For example, this, the drainage board has been separated out, and they have their own surveyors doing the work there for the survey, for the drainage board. And presumably, the same thing will happen with the stormwater management, uh, department. Even though the statute says the county surveyor is part of both of those, I'm a non-voting member of the drainage board, and everything is pretty much railed off. I get very little communications from them. I expect the same with the stormwater management, uh, department.
Okay, you were talking about.
Yeah.
If you, if you're, if say you're doing 30, uh, surveys this year, you're talking about 30?
No, that's, it's going to be approximately 130, 140.
130, okay, 130. Does a surveyor have to actually physically, or can he take the information you have, and then he just signs off on it?
He signs off on the information.
Doesn't look like it's a four-day event. It looks like it.
It's, it'll probably be, uh, because he, the reason we went with John Saylor as our choice is because he's familiar with the people doing the work. He trained the people doing the work, so he will not take a whole lot of time reviewing it. He knows what these people produce, and he can accept on faith that they're doing the work correctly.
And I, if I was doing my house, I could go through A through Z and pick wherever I wanted to. It doesn't really, you don't have to have that kind of.
Right, and, and, and we can actually, you know, solicit for more people.
What's been the last, the last four years, because I know he's been there longer than that, your, your predecessor, how many, what'd he do a year?
Uh, the, the, when I came in, uh, my crew working perpetuation had a stack of 300.
How many would he do a year?
Oh, I don't know. Well, that's, that was basically the whole last seasons. They were working through.
Okay, hang on. I'll do it slower.
Okay.
You had, whatever you, whatever you did prior, whatever they did prior to that, they have records of. Can you please look up the records, your records, and find out what they've done for the last four years?
Okay.
And we'll get a number. Because we have to go back and change it. We, I'd like to know the true number on it.
Okay, and, and I'll, I'll certainly check back for the records. Yeah, records have been in short supply because I get, for example, get no email that transpired in the last 10 years.
How would you get emails that, that happened 10 years ago? I'm just curious. What does that email have to do with what we're trying to run a business here?
Uh, I wanted to get an idea of what's going on in the department.
Do you have people that work, do you have people that work for him for your, for the last four years? Are there any employees that are still left?
And, yeah, well, there's, yes.
Okay, sit down, have a meeting with them, and find out what they've done in the last four years, and get back to us a number.
Have you, have you asked IT for emails?
Um, I've brought up the, the desire to see emails multiple times. Um, I also. And I'd also would like to find out what's currently coming in the department. For the last five months, all the emails go to the individuals. I wanted a department email account, so I could see a stream of information of what people are requesting.
Who'd you ask for that?
And it's coming up multiple times, and, and we can't get it done.
He wants a department email, a county surveyor generic email.
I'm not aware of it.
She, she doesn't work in your department either.
I can verify that.
Okay.
And I don't know who else in that list.
I, I know, for example, Tony Hendricks, the prior surveyor, still has an active email account with the county, and Christine Kyle still has an active email account.
Here's what I'm telling you. When I send out a thing for Tony with the FMEC thing that he was on, it bounces. So it's not a, it's not a, his email isn't active because I got to go in and change it.
Might show in on your address list.
That could be what's going on.
Let me help you. I haven't, in 23 years, I've never had an email account. They still show I have an email account, so that's not true.
In that case, uh, yeah, it could be that it's just in the, in the.
It's in the memory.
Mem, okay. But yes, I've been trying to, to.
So how about your employees that work for you, that work for you for the last four years? They still, you have some employees.
Uh, they are, I think there's only one person that's been there for four years, more than four years. The other one's been about three years.
Both those guys, three years and one in, in four years. Have a meeting with them, ask them the numbers, and then get back to us, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
So to answer. So to answer.
I'm going to ask.
To answer the question about email and distribution list or incoming one?
There is.
There's a surveyor group that has Tim Harold, Adam Laners, John Mathewson, Michael Mauser?
Yes, that's the current crew.
Mike Pollan, whoever the point recorder is, and John South.
John South is now in the drainage board.
But it's something you can fix.
Yeah, but John, yeah, we can tweak John's. I mean, that's.
President, can we get a number?
So there is a group already.
Okay.
Mr. President, we got, it'd be a quick one. Why don't you have a meeting tomorrow? He can come in during one of our third times. And I like the table. This is this time.
Okay, well, can I ask?